Thank you very much. Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Cappell City Council. There's a quorum presence. I'm calling the meeting to order. We will be convening into the executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I will come out and announce work session, at which time the public will be invited to join us. As a note, in case you can't tell, I am joining by Zoom due to provisions of COVID-19. Thank you very much. Please be patient, and we will be back in touch. So Jessica, I see your head there. Am I live? All right. We are at the end of the executive session. The time is 6:00 PM, and we're going to move into work session in the first floor conference room. The public is invited to join us.
If we get it, if we get, if we get the chance.
Such small servings.
Yeah, I'll take.
Yes. I'm sorry.
George Cappell slept on his table.
Little people.
Never respect the table.
Neither do us.
Sorry, and you want, I like you on the.
I don't know. I doubt.
Thank you. Mayor looks like he was lost. He looks like he was lost.
Good evening, everybody. This is social.
It's not gonna work.
And we're going to begin with definitely a full item. We definitely have. Definitely agenda item. Is there anything on the agenda that you guys would like to have more information on or discuss before we get into that?
Is he asking now?
Yeah.
Is it my name?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any things from the agenda that you want to talk about now? I have a question.
John.
Mayor, I was just wondering on agenda item B, do we have a timeline as to when? Just wanted to get clear for you as to when this is supposed to start and when it's supposed to finish.
Approved this evening. It will be started as early as May 8th. It'll take about seven to eight months, which will put us around Christmas.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And you put you're asking about Dupont Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Oh. Could you kind of divide a little bit for me, please, on having a little cover here?
Likewise, likewise, mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the agenda? Let's see, move to the evening now. Let's move on to item B. Uh, this is a presentation on our five-year forecast. And this is in film.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an overview of the five-year forecast. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you with information. Think of this as your first look at what you'll see during the budget process. Since this presentation is simply to provide information, no direction is being requested this evening. You may hear something that you'd like to discuss at your council retreat in May, and you can let us know if that's the case. So specifically this evening, I want to answer the following questions for you. So why do we prepare the five-year forecast? Who participates and what are their roles in the five-year forecast process? What is the five-year forecast timeline? What's included in the document? And then finally, what's next? The five-year forecast is prepared for several reasons. The primary purpose of this document is to be used as an internal tool that encourages staff to think about the future, as well as to analyze the impact on future budgets of programs and projects that support the Vision 2040, requests to maintain the city's infrastructure, and then requests that continue to enhance our customers' experiences. We then use the information to create strategies concerning timing of funding needed to accomplish the programs and projects included in the forecast. For example, the five-year forecast process pointed out that we should reconsider the timing of various water sewer projects to reduce the impact of those projects on water and sewer rates. The five-year forecast is also a tool we can use to educate citizens and employees regarding the importance of long-term planning, to share with both groups when and how the Vision 2040 could be incorporated into future budgets, and then to communicate opportunities for citizen engagement with the city. And finally, the five-year forecast is used by rating agencies when evaluating the financial health of the city. It documents plans regarding bond issues and maintenance of our city infrastructure. The five-year forecast provides the rating agencies with insight into leadership's financial vision of the future and strategies for maintaining a healthy financial outlook. It lets the rating agencies know that we are identifying future trends and developing strategies today to modify those trends. Next, who participates and what is their role? So it begins with council and our citizens. First, council sets policies and provides direction to the city manager on things like the tax rate, as well as projects and service levels they'd like to include each year. Citizens provide input through their participation in the Vision 2040 process, and then when they speak at citizens' appearance and through emails sent to council and staff. Next, the city manager and director's role. The city manager communicates council's policies and direction to the organization. He sets expectations and encourages strategic and visionary thinking. He reminds us to keep the Vision 2040 in mind when developing our department five-year forecast. The directors support the city manager's message through the development of requests. They encourage strategic and visionary thinking when developing their five-year forecasts with their teams. Next, the assistant directors. They're really responsible for the five-year forecast process. They determine which requests are critical to operations or the community versus requests to classify as high, medium, or low in importance. The assistant directors use a form that they developed. It's called a prioritization matrix, and the matrix is completed by departments for each request that they submit. It's then used by the assistant directors to discuss and prioritize the requests, and then to prepare recommendations and strategies that they present to the leadership team, which includes the city manager's office and the director group. Examples of prioritization matrix prepared by departments would be requests for items like to create new programs and projects that they believe support the Vision 2040, additional staffing needs to support those programs, and then requests to maintain city's infrastructure, as well as requests from council. Last, the Strategic Financial Engagement Team, which we'll refer to as SFE, is led by Jessica, who is our budget officer. She facilitates the collaboration and conversations among the assistant director group. SFE also performs revenue projections, and our procurement team researches pricing for supplies and services that are used citywide. The information is then provided to departments to consider when preparing their five-year forecast operations and requests. And then finally, the document is prepared by the budget team. Next, I'd like to share the timeline with you. The five-year forecast process is kicked off in September with the assistant directors. They discuss the prior year process, and any suggested changes to the process are included in the instructions that are shared citywide in October. We check in with the A.D.s and the departments in November to find out about their progress and if they have any questions. And then expenditure summaries and prioritization matrices are all due in December. It's important to note that the expenditures and requests, they're due in December, and so that means that the document that is, you receive tonight is based on the knowledge that we had in December. So any economic changes that have occurred since then or global impacts would not be incorporated in the document. Then in January, the assistant director group is very busy. They need to discuss all of the department operations, needs, and requests. And this is when the assistant director group discusses each request and then classifies each request as critical, high, medium, or low. They also work together to identify strategies to consider regarding how to balance revenues with operating needs plus new requests. They then present the results of their discussion to the city manager's office and department directors. And in February, the assistant directors discuss any feedback from the city manager's office and director group and determine how to incorporate that feedback into this document. The draft document is then ready in March and provided to the city manager for review. His feedback is incorporated, and the final five-year forecast document is completed in April and presented to you this evening. As I mentioned earlier, unlike the budget, which is a formal document that requires council action, the five-year forecast is considered an internal planning tool, and so again, no action is taken by council on this document. And then the last step of the process is presenting the five-year forecast to the employees later this month. So what's in the five-year forecast? The document contains the introductory section, a financial analysis section, citizen engagement section, and then finally, an appendix. The introduction section provides an overview of how to read the financial forecast, and among other things, provides a message from the city manager, which contains information concerning assumptions used in the document. For example, this document assumes that Rule 3.334 is adopted and that SB 2 continues to limit property tax revenue. The financial section highlights the total revenues, revenue projections for all of the funds of the city. It then provides an overview of each revenue category and which funds receive that source of revenue. The financial section is also provides total revenues and expenditures for the general fund, the water sewer fund, and five major special revenue funds, and the debt service fund. This section also provides information concerning the various capital improvement projects identified by staff. And the capital improvement section also identifies the funding source of each capital project. The third section is called Citizen Engagement. It provides statistical information, like demographic information, statistical information as far as regarding the departments, like number of utility bills processed, number of street miles maintained, and then awards received by departments. It also provides information on various educational programs, like the Junior Police Academy, the self-defense classes, and a car seat inspection program at LSP. On, it contains information on community partnerships, like the farmer's market, Keep Cappell Beautiful, and the community gardens, and on leadership programs like Allies and Community. It provides opportunities to volunteer at, for example, the animal shelter, library, art center, and the community gardens. And then finally, opportunities to learn about city government. For example, information on how to participate on the various boards of the city, as well as how to become a council member. And then the document's appendix really contains a various financial policies, historical data, personal account, other financial schedules, and of course, acronyms, because we use a lot of those. So next, I'll show you some revenues expenditure overview for our major funds. It's important to note that, again, all the information, our forecasts that are used in the forecast are used to plan for the future and identify potential strategies that can be used to address identified shortfalls, as well as determine priorities. So I'm going to begin with the general fund. And this is, this slide is page 44 in your five-year forecast document. It shows the revenue projections for both the no-new revenue rate and a rate that increases property tax revenue 3.499%. The revenue shown for both scenarios does include other revenues accounted for in the general fund. For example, sales tax revenue, and again, the assumption is that Rule 3.334 has been implemented, as well as a growth rate of 5% for sales tax each year. And this, that assumption will be consistent throughout the document for all funds that receive sales tax. Property tax and sales tax make up about 82.5% of total revenues of the general fund. Pages 35 through 40 provide information on other revenues of the general fund. And then pages 239 and 240 provide assumptions used for each revenue source. This chart also shows expenditures. And first, I'd like to point out that the spike in fiscal year '23, if you, if you'll recall, is related to fully funding the Capital Replacement Fund and the Enterprise Solutions Fund. The total of funding those two replacements funds was a little over 12 million, so leaving the fiscal year '23 expenditures at about 64.8 after removing that. The fiscal year '24 expenditures shown in the five-year forecast are about 7% greater than fiscal year '23. Pages 41 through 113 of your document provide information by department. So the expenditure amounts include the amounts needed for operations, as well as requests submitted by the departments. So what's covered at the town hall meeting on Thursday for the five-year forecast, for the budget for fiscal year '24, in support of the Vision 2040, community development did include a village concept coordinator, a retail attraction consultant, food truck, park infrastructure, and then the food truck operations, at a total cost to be estimated at about 1.1 million. A few of the other requests that were mentioned during the town hall include the life safety park vehicle storage building extension, drawing storage, fire training room tables and chairs, and the addition of a communication specialist for the Community Information Office Division. Pages 53 through 57 provide additional information concerning department requests. Expenditures are also, also include an overall increase of 5% for salary and benefits category, and that's basically 3% for salaries and about 9% increase for healthcare coverage. Next is the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund. This slide is page 140 in your document, and it shows an overall, an overall of revenues and expenditures for this fund. And the revenue source of the IMF fund is the 1/4 of a percent sales tax and then a transfer from the general fund. The revenue is used for the reconstruction of streets, the annual maintenance of streets, sidewalks, and alleys, and the maintenance of traffic signals, and a maintenance of city facilities, as well as an annual ADA improvements. So a strategy that is being considered that would impact this fund is to reduce the transfer from the general fund to the IMF to help offset some of the costs that are returning to the general fund from crime control and the reduction in the transfer from the CRDC fund to the general fund. And of course, if this strategy is implemented, it will slow alley sidewalks, facilities, and street maintenance. Unfortunately, when you think about one strategy that may benefit one fund, there is an offset that may negatively impact another fund. The IMF fund is covered on pages 140 through 142. Next is an overview of the forecasted revenues and expenditures of Cappell Recreation Development Corp., which I'll refer to as CRDC. This slide is page 151 in your document. The revenue source for CRDC is from the half, 1/2 of a percent sales tax. The amount reflected in this fund is after moving the CRDC debt service to the CRDC debt service fund, the amount needed to pay the principal and interest on outstanding CRDC bonds. Revenues in this fund also include the forecasted revenue related to the art center. And more information concerning art center revenues can be found on page 35 of your document. Expenditures in this fund include operations at the art center, as well as requests mentioned at the town hall on Thursday, which include replacing the turf at Middle School North, the north levee bridge replacement, the picnic table and bench replacements in the parks, and then repainting of various city amenities that are throughout the parks. For the first few years, the focus is, has been on repair and maintenance. So several projects have been pushed out as we wait to find out if the change to the Rule 3.3 will actually go into effect, which is the reason that you're seeing a spike in fiscal year '26. So the community experience team continues to monitor and prioritize projects in a manner that allows this fund to function as if the rule is in effect. And this is an example of the process that allows us to see trends and then create strategies to adjust those trends. In fact, as I was talking about, this is where the A.D.s helped and considered the sustainability of CRDC should we see a reduction in sales tax, and that is why we stopped the 35% of sales tax transfer to the general fund. That is, that began in fiscal year '23 and continues throughout all years shown in this document. For more information on CRDC, you can find that on page 151 through 156. Next is an overview of Crime Control Prevention District revenues and expenditures, and this slide is page 146 in your document. Revenues come from the 1/4 of a percent sales tax. Revenues also include revenue received from the school district reimbursing for the SRO program, which is almost 300,000 and is expected to increase about 5% each year, which again, is the increase that we're, we included in the document for salary, the salary and benefits category. As mentioned at the town hall on Thursday, Crime Control Prevention District requests include soundproofing and updating the cameras used in the investigation interview room, beginning the replacement of the automated license plate recognition cameras at intersections, and then entering a lease program to deploy those cameras that allows those cameras to be deployed and moved from different locations. Expenditures also include the cost of the jail contract and the cost of intake the city's 911 service. Again, just as a reminder regarding the crime control, recall that one of the strategies that we used to sustain this fund was to move all personnel, except for the SROs, out of the crime control and placing those back into the general fund. And this, again, was the result of the change in sales tax. The last fund that I'll cover is water and sewer. The Water and Sewer Fund is different from all the previous funds presented in that it is an enterprise fund, which means it's accounted for like a business. Therefore, the charges for services are expected to cover the cost of operations, the cost to maintain the water sewer system, capital purchases, and debt payments. This slide provides an overview of the Water, Water Sewer Fund's forecasted revenues and expenditures, and this slide is page 117 in your document. The revenues are based on the current rate study, which included a move to the block or tiered rate structure for water. The revenues for sewer are based on the old method used to bill for sewer service. We will be calculating sewer revenue for residential now that March is over and comparing it to the sewer revenue for residential under the previous billing method. We anticipated, when we brought forward the winter averaging, that there would be $160,000 to $300,000 decrease in sewer revenue by moving to winter averaging. And so we'll take a look at that and see how close we were. So how to address this difference will be discussed in the fall once we have the cost from Trinity River Authority and Dallas Party Utilities. So depending on what those two entities do with their rates and the impact of winter averaging on sewer revenue, it may be necessary to increase rates to not only generate the revenue level using a winter averaging rate model, but also to cover the increases from Trinity River and Dallas Party Utilities. Expenditures of the Water and Sewer Fund include costs of personnel, supplies, annual maintenance of system, services, and transfers, as well, again, as the principal and interest payments on bonds for fiscal year '24. Specifically, expenditures for operations includes the increase in rates charged by Dallas Party Utilities for water, which is projected in this document to increase 4% each year, and then increases in Trinity River Authority rates for wastewater service, which are projected by TRA to be 5%, 6%, 10%, and then 14% in 2027. And so from 2024 to 2027, those are the rate increases that they have projected. Expenditures also include an increase in debt payments based on the issuance of additional debt or additional bonds to fund infrastructure related to capital projects identified at Public Works to maintain our system. Specifically in this document, there are three bond issuances totaling 19.4 million to be issued over the time period shown. The city has already issued about 30.2 million in water sewer bonds. So this would bring total water sewer debt to almost 50 million. The five-year forecast process allowed staff to identify the need to reevaluate the timing of various projects, which will result in a reduction in the amount of bonds to be issued over the next five years. And so the new strategy will be reflected in the next five-year forecast that we prepare. So what's next? Internally, the five-year forecast kicks off the budget process since the first year shown in the five-year forecast is the next budget year. Externally, the town hall held last Thursday kicked off the budget season with the community. This slide shows that the next opportunity for citizen input is the Crime Control Public Hearing, and it will take place right before the regular council meeting on June 13th. Then in July is the, are the budget workshops that are held with council. Citizens have an opportunity to speak at each budget workshop. And as shown on the slide, there are four budget workshops in July with the last one on July 27th. The budget workshops are a great time for the community to provide input to council regarding the budget. So after the budget workshops are completed, the budget becomes council's budget, and it is required to be filed with the city secretary by August 4th this year. The public hearings on the budget and tax rate are scheduled for August 22nd with a vote on the budget and then a vote on the tax rate to occur at that meeting also. It's necessary, if necessary, a vote to ratify the tax rate will also occur that night. If necessary, a vote to ratify the tax rate will also occur that night. Citizens do have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing portion at this meeting, as well as during citizens' appearance at this meeting, but at every council meeting. Citizens can also email questions and or comments to budgetinput@capeltx.gov, and I'll have that email on my last slide. So once the budget and the tax rate are adopted in August, for us, the cycle starts all over again in September when we kick off this process all over again. So I know I've covered a lot of information this evening. So this slide summarizes a few of the key takeaways. Number one, this is a first look at what you'll see in July during the five-year forecast budget workshops. Again, the five-year forecast is an internal tool used by staff to identify trends and develop strategies to modify certain trends. And then finally, it's the forecast contained in the document are subject the forecast contained in this document are subject to change as we receive new information. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, if questions and comments can be sent to us at the email address on the screen.
I did have one question for you.
Yes.
I did have one question for you. I know that we usually routinely use a 2.5% rate of inflation kind of average over time to be very accurate. With the current rate of inflation being what it is, does that impact your five-year plan at all?
So what we did this year is procurement worked to identify things that are purchased citywide and really looked at what are the costs that we're seeing. And so as reflect, I mean, it's a 7% increase from the current year budget. So we are seeing costs increase, particularly, we'll be discussing it on our public safety vehicles. We're seeing a large increase in the cost of those.
I know you covered this a little bit, but was there any overall feedback from the town hall?
It was a great turnout. I think there were lots of questions. I know there were questions around smart city. Do you recall any of the other questions? That one stood out for me. There was lots of conversation on smart city and what does a smart city look like?
How's it going for Kim? Well, thank you very much, and you're very important. Let's keep it up to here.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on to IMF, this is the Capitol Hill. I just have to make sure we meet together.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. This presentation is intended to provide an update on a number of projects that we've been working on. The last time we were here providing a project update was in October of 2022. It is no secret that due to the age of our infrastructure, we are in a maintenance, rehab, and reconstruction mode. And so the projects in this update represent approximately $65 to $70 million in effort. Some projects are complete, some are wrapping up, and some are in design. The intent of this update is to provide you with the status and prepare you for the upcoming agenda items related to some of the projects. So first off, I'm going to talk about some of the, oops, too fast, some of the streets and drains projects that we have. About every four to five years, we perform a pavement condition assessment on all of our streets and alleys in the city. And what this does, this helps us identify and prioritize our maintenance, rehab, and reconstruction of the roadways and gives us the prioritization list of which streets to come next on that schedule. And so on this, I'm going to start kind of from the left side of the picture there. The highlighted is Royal Lane. And so where we are with Royal is we are at about a 90% design complete of that project. And we are looking to begin construction once we finish South Beltline. The good news is South Beltline, which is the next project on the list, is almost complete. The contract ends in the summer of this year, 2023. We are looking to anticipate putting traffic back on both sides of the roadway maybe later this month or the 1st of May. And so that's the status update on the Beltline. The two little ones there in the middle, Bullock and Howe, we are currently approaching 30% plans on those. And we anticipate and estimate beginning construction on Bullock and Howe later this year, late 2023. Moving on, on the center there, we have the Arborbrook Stream G3 Arborbrook Channel. We recently had a public input meeting last Tuesday on this project and had a pretty good turnout on this project. And so we are approaching 30% design once we get to 60% design, which we anticipate this summer. We will have another meeting with those individuals and provide more detail on the impacts to them. Moving on to a little bit north of that is the Woodhurst Residential Reconstruction Project. This one is at 100% design, and we are anticipating beginning construction on this roadway this summer. Next one is the St. Joseph's Channel. That one is a drainage channel in front of St. Joseph's off of East Sandy Lake Road, kind of next to Universal Academy. There is some erosion taking place on the banks of that channel that abuts Sandy Lake Road. And so we are looking to bring a design contract to the future council meeting here in the near future. And then on the north side of town, the East Lake Right Turn Lane, we are currently, that's an in-house design that we are working on. We're approaching 60% design plans to be submitted to Texas DOT. Once we submit those plans, depending on the timing of Texas DOT, it's another one we anticipate beginning construction later this year. Some projects that we have completed recently since the last update in October are the intersection improvement project of the auxiliary lanes and turn lanes along Denton Tap in 121. We've completed that project. We've also completed the traffic signal at Royal and North Point over by Fire Station 4. We have completed the grade control structure that's in Denton Creek underneath Denton Tap Bridge. That one's complete. And we've also done some striping around town that's been completed, as well as some pavement improvements along Vividant, Falcon, Mockingbird. And we're currently in process of doing some pavement repairs along Sandy Lake Road. And then we will jump back onto more road pavement repairs once schools let out. Moving on to the water sewer projects. There are a few projects on here. The first picture is our Village Parkway Pump Station. And it's kind of a three-tiered or three-phase project. We have the redundancy, the generator, and some rehab. And so I'll start with the redundancy. And this is the one where we're doing some valve and piping improvements to the pump station so that we can have, so we can separate the station in two and be able to work on one side or the other. And this project, the redundancy project, is 100% designed. And we anticipate bidding this out later this month or early May and then beginning construction this summer on that project, on that portion of it. The generator is one of those supply issues, and we're waiting on delivery of that generator and estimate that to be delivered sometime this summer as well. And then once we get that, we'll install that and connect it. The rehab portion is a future project. Those are the two tanks down there on the bottom. We are going to be coming to a council meeting in the future for a design inspection and design of those tanks to rehab those. They're original tanks, and they need some updating and rehabilitation to them. The other phase of the redundancy project is the interconnections with the surrounding cities, the neighborhood cities. So with Lewisville and Grapevine, we are at about almost 90% design with those connections. And the one, the picture in the middle with Grapevine, that's a connection that we're going to do over off of West Bethel. We're going to interconnect with Grapevine. And then Lewisville, we have two connections, one at Highland Drive and Denton Tap, and the other one at Lake Vista and MacArthur. And so we're about 90% design with those plans. We anticipate and estimate that we will begin construction on those later this summer. And then once we pass the peak demand of the summer, we'll go ahead and make the actual connections to those neighborhood cities. We also have some sanitary sewer design coming in the future council meeting. For, we have, as part of the INI project, to do some repairs of about 15 locations of sanitary sewer locations. The INI is the inflow and infiltration. It was, we have a bond of about $3 million that we did in 2018 to do repairs to sanitary sewer where we had some inflow and infiltration, which means rainwater was getting into the system, and we were having to treat that at the TRA plant. And it charges us to feed and treat that. So we were repairing all those holes in the system. And so we'll have, we did a condition assessment on the sanitary sewer. And from that condition assessment, we found locations that we need some repairs on. And so we have about 15 locations that we'll be coming to at a future council meeting for award. And then the last set of projects are kind of other projects that we're working on. The service center improvements expansion. We are currently at a schematic design level of this project. We will be coming back to a future work session, council meeting work session, to discuss this project more in detail and provide an update and receive feedback at a later date. And then one that I'm proud to say, the enterprise asset management project. This is our tool that we use in public works and park operations for maintenance and management of all our assets, our infrastructure. This is what helps us make decisions on maintaining the infrastructure. We have been working on this project, implementing this project for the last 18 months. And as of March 31st, we have recently completed this in our full implementation. And we are live using this across public works and parks operations, which is exciting for us. That is my update. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So council, any questions for Mike?
Sorry, was it at the next meeting that we were going to talk about the, some of the sidewalk corners?
Yes, so the April 25th council work session will have an ADA presentation.
Okay, so I'll wait.
Mayor, put in.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned that traffic can be from both sides of Beltline end of this month. I know we built in some incentives for contractor to finish it earlier. Is that kicking in?
Yes, they are, they're ahead of schedule. We anticipate, so Phase 3 is the intersection with 635. We are doing some redesign of the Hackberry intersection. And so that kind, that delay is on our part. And so we are going to work with the contractor, but they are ahead of schedule, and we anticipate that they'll be able to get a portion of the incentive.
Any more? All right, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, IMF is in the special regarding approval of the adoption of the 2023 National Electoral Code.
This is so exciting, and I have handouts for everybody. It's two packets per person. One is a top 25 items that will change with the 2023 National Electoral Code. And the other one is just a notated version of, just a notated version of the changes in our city's ordinance. For everybody to review at your leisure. This is, we're not going to go item by item tonight. This is for all of you to keep and for all of you to read at your convenience. In case none of you have met me yet, my name is Steve Schubert. I'm the building official for the City of Capella. I am proposing tonight the adoption of the 2023 National Electoral Code. During the open session tonight, council will be opening a public hearing and then table the vote until Tuesday, April 25. This will not only give everybody time to read through all these documents and read through all the proposed changes, but also give us an opportunity to be able to answer any questions. The adoption of the 2023 National Electoral Code is proposed for the approval of the city council, which will make us compliant with the state's adoption effective September 1st, 2023, as well as updating the electoral ordinance for the city. These two items together will provide a clear and more concise electoral chapter for our citizens and for our contractors. The Texas Department of License and Regulation is the regulatory agency over the Texas adopted Electoral Code and the electoral work performed in the state on residential and commercial projects. The Texas Occupation Code Title 8, Chapter 1305.111 requires that the executive director of the DDLR adopt the latest version of the National Electoral Code as soon as it becomes available. So with the 2023 National Electoral Code, it just came out at the end of 2022, October 2022. And they are planning on adopting it effective September 1st of 2023. So if we do move forward with adoption, that would just puts us a couple of months ahead of the state. The newest version of the National Electoral Code is based on changes in technology, as well as data that we receive from different agencies, such as insurance agencies, fire prevention agencies, different groups all throughout the United States. We did propose all of these changes and everything to the Board of Adjustments back on December 8, 2022. We went page by page, item by item, all the way through the changes in ordinance. And the Board of Adjustments did approve it and recommend it for approval by council. At present, City Capella enforces both the 2014 National Electoral Code as adopted by the City of Capella and the state-adopted 2020 National Electoral Code. This can become quite confusing. And in any instance where we're dealing with contractors, they have questions about it, all we can state is whenever there is a conflict between the 2014 edition and the 2020 edition, the most restrictive will prevail. Because based on changes in technology, changes in the codes themselves, sometimes will be more restrictive than the state's 2020 edition. Sometimes the state's 2020 edition will be more restrictive than we are. Fortunately for us, the largest differences between the 2014 and the 2020 National Electoral Code pertain to bookdocks. So that saves us quite a bit, but there are still some other differences. There are many changes between the 2014 and 2023 additions of the National Electoral Code. One of the items I provided you is a list of the top 25 changes. If I was to provide all of the changes, we would be here for about two weeks. So these are just the top 25. And again, you guys can just read them at your leisure. If you have any questions about what they mean, just let me know, and I will happily assist any way I can. I'm going to go over four of the top 25 right now. One of them is equipment doors. When you're looking at an electoral room, and please keep in mind this primarily pertains to commercial occupancy, something big like a school or an industrial building, you have an electoral room that is designed for a certain size. Well, now they start replacing equipment in there. The equipment will have large doors on it. And that large door will actually block off a portion of that room once it's open and somebody's working on it. Well, now the designers, such as architects, will have to figure out a way to accommodate for those larger doors in those smaller rooms and figure out a workaround to provide the required allowable or required egress out of that space for the safety of staff and everybody else. It may not seem like a big deal, but ultimately speaking, it can be quite a challenge for designers. The next one is GFCIs, ground fault circuitive corruptors. Everybody's known with GFCIs. It's the weird outlets that, you know, once your kids and everybody have plugged in hair dryers and heaters and everything else, it pops one of those circuits that's on the receptacle itself, and you have to figure out which one it is and push the button and reset it. Well, moving forward, those are now going to be required in commercial occupancies for anything that has a kitchenette or a full kitchen. The concept is even in a kitchenette at a workspace, people are still putting crock pots up. It can still fall into a sink. It still needs to be protected by a GFCI. The next change, actually ironically enough, is already partially in the 2020 that we currently enforce through state law. It just gets a little bit clearer in the 2023. When you're looking at a house during the, you see your meter base on the outside, and on the inside, you have your breaker panel that has all these switches and everything else in it. When you go to a commercial occupancy, if you ever driven around the backside of it, you'll see they have big meter bases, and then they have these big switches next to the meter bases. Well, those big switches are now required on residential occupancies, unfortunately. It has been deemed that is the safest, easiest means for emergency first responders or for a repair person to come through, shut off power to the structure. a repair person to come through, shut off power to the structure, and then do whatever repairs they need. This also allows repair personnel to shut down and replace a panel without having to contact the purveyor in order to plug in the meter base or anything like that. So it does actually benefit the general public as well as the contractors. But now with them being required on residential structures, we have to look at it as it will reflect on remodels, things of that nature. We will not be enforcing it on existing structures unless they replace the meter base. I think that's completely fair to everybody. Next one is electric car charging stations. Once upon a time, electric car chargers took a lot, a lot of power. And each and every one had to have a dedicated circuit and had to be serviced by an individual breaker and all this stuff. Now with changes in technology where the electric car chargers are much more energy efficient and much more user friendly, you can actually put two on a single circuit. So a lot of these houses where people have two Teslas or two electric vehicles, they can install two charging stations on one electrical circuit and probably cost about fifty percent of what was done previously underneath the older codes. Now for the changes to the electoral chapter. Our electoral chapter, it is one of the packets that I provided you is a notated version. That is not every single change. In order for me to notate every single change, the entire document would be highlighted and notated. A lot of it is changes to verbiage, also there are changes to formatting. It's just to clean it up, make it more user friendly, make it more contemporary, get rid of older references, and update references to how we require permitting and require contractor registration. Changes in evolution of our technology, we've changed from doing a lot of things in paper form to doing things in digital format. The updated codes or the updated city ordinance reflects those changes and makes it more flexible for us, so we can have a little bit more administrative authority on the processes. We've also removed definitions of license types that are referenced by state now, not anything that we define, state defines it through the Texas Department License and Regulation. And we've also updated the Board of Appeals that we use. It states in there, the standards commission, and we've been utilizing the Board of Adjustment for our process, so that puts us in alignment. Along with changes in formatting, we've updated appearance of number to be more user friendly. And we have also added new verbiage identifying a threatening or abusive behavior to city staff or city representatives may be caused for the revocation of city registration by a contractor. This existing section already includes a long list of reasons that a contractor registration could be revoked. We've included verbiage in there that protects our staff. And I've also copied and pasted information directly from the building codes for the inspection request, shall be in the duty of permit holder request, the scope of work to be inspected through the proper process. Every request for inspections must be filed at least one working day before such inspection is desired. Should be the duty of the permit holder provide access and means for a proper inspection of such work. That just puts it back on the permit holder to make sure that they follow the due process and make it easier for our staff to be able to access the areas that are up for inspection. And again, there's, are a lot of changes. That's why these documents have been provided to give you guys time to be able to go through them all. If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them on the twenty-fifth when this is brought back open for the public hearing. If it is approved on April twenty-fifth, then on April twenty-sixth, we will post on our website that'll be effective May twenty-sixth. Because of the size of our municipality, we can actually enforce it as soon as council says yes. But in order to be a little bit more fair to our citizens and our contractors and all our customers, we're going to give it thirty days. That gives them time to make whatever adjustments they need to and also for staff to get a hundred percent on board with the changes in the, in the codes. Ultimately speaking, by us correcting our city ordinance as well as adopting twenty twenty-three National Electoral Code, it overall makes it a whole lot easier for our citizens and our customers, both internally and externally. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much for bringing this. It's a lot of light reading materials, so appreciate that. So my question is, when we make a big change like this, let's say that we, the council goes ahead and adopts this, how do we know, like, the people that are coming into their process, how do, how do, are they notified? I know you said you put on the website, but how do they know specifically, like, what changes are being made? Is it all just encompassed that now you need to know this version of the code? How do, like, how does that work? And how do we make sure that that process doesn't get? My big motivation asking this question is, I still, I want to make sure that it's, that's, we're following the rules, but it's easy for make sure that our contractors and our citizens understand and know what their requirements are. So there was the one thing on there that, you know, it's like, it puts it back on them to know the process. How do they know the process?
Well, we, we post that throughout on our website, same as just any other municipality. Every single municipality is required by law to put on their website what their building codes are. By putting it out there, giving a thirty day notice, we're hoping that provides everybody a little bit of a buffer and a little bit of a heads up of, hey, this is coming. We absolutely will go through a, a change period where we'll have about three or four months where we'll get submittals and we'll say, well, you know, as of such and such date, we are on the twenty twenty-three National Electoral Code, please update your code references. Honestly, it's not going to change a whole lot insofar as the submittals, so it's not like we're going to have people have to completely redraw plans, they'll just be updating the code reference. Just like today is a perfect example, I got a brand new permit applied for nineteen two thousand eighteen codes. The City of Capella has never adopted two thousand eighteen codes, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's typical, but these only get updates every three years, is that right?
Every three. The National Electoral Code is like twenty twenty-three, and next year we'll have the fun of doing the international codes, which come out in twenty twenty-four.
So did we skip the seven years on the updates or did it occur during the COVID time?
It occurred during the COVID time, plus the change in staff. So once I came on board, I was asked to take a look at it and looking at the timelines, it seemed like it would, a better expenditure of staff's time and effort to move forward with the next versions instead of the ones that came out a couple of years ago.
Just an offhand question, do you have any idea how much that emergency disconnect for a residential home is going to increase the cost?
Well, the electrical disconnects, NEMA three, you can get anywhere from a hundred twenty dollars all the way up to three hundred fifty dollars, depends on your source and which model you pick. So on the overall cost of a new structure, it's minimal. Some of the receptacles that people are buying that have U-plex receptacles for charging smartphones and tablets are actually more expensive than that switches.
All right. Bob, this, this would apply to that state law which you had told me about, if once you start the development process, that you're under the old code?
Yeah, it's vested rights.
Vested rights, yeah.
So once a permit, a series of permits, then you'd be allowed to, so you may have some, you may have some discussions with your clients and your city, and we'll have those discussions with our.
Yes, okay, thank you.
We, would you?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to you for the presentation. I'm a little confused with the dates. You mentioned twenty forty, fourteen, city adopted. And you mentioned twenty twenty, state adopted. Now we are in twenty twenty-three. Can you clarify the dates?
So it's the addition of the book. The two thousand fourteen National Electoral Code is what's currently adopted by the City of Capella. The twenty twenty National Electoral Code is what the state of Texas currently has adopted. And the Texas Department License and Regulation who enforces the electoral chapter in the state of Texas, that's what they enforce, is twenty twenty.
So we can adopt.
Correct. But by state law, we cannot be less restrictive than the state, we can only be more restrictive than the state.
So since twenty fourteen, we haven't adopted the latest changes?
And a lot of that has to do with COVID and other items that got in the way.
But this is always exciting, so thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure, try to keep it short and sweet.
Yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So that is the end of our work session. The time is six fifty-seven. We will convene into regular session of the Capella City Council at seven thirty in Council Chambers.
We have adjourned from work session and will convene into regular session of the Capella City Council at seven thirty. And we hope to see you then. Thank you very much.
Are our wayward council members coming forward? Can somebody give me a thumbs up? Did you hear me? I'm talking. No audio? Julian? Are we, are we good to go? Good to go? Julian, I don't believe they hear me. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three, four, five, louder. Need more audio. More audio. All right, and Julian, I'm not hearing any of them. All right, the time is seven thirty-three PM, and we're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. As a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate registry outside the council chambers and list your address. Just as a reminder, on item number fourteen on our agenda tonight is not a public hearing. If you would like to speak regarding item fourteen, please sign up for the citizens' appearance. Tonight, we have Minister, Youth Minister Caroline Leach here to give our invocation, and then that's going to be followed with Mayor Protem Biju Matthew leading us in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand for the invocation.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to be together tonight. We are grateful for the city council, the elected officials who sacrificed their time and efforts to serve our city. We're grateful for the many volunteers who actively participate in their community and work for the betterment of our community. We pray that this meeting will be efficient and that all voices will be heard and that decisions and plans that are made will be for the betterment of our community. And we say these things in the name of our Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Father,
God, his sons of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, oblique, and just as strong.
Thank you. Be seated, please. Can you hear me okay? As you can see, Mayor West is attending this meeting through the Zoom. So on behalf of the mayor and the council members, I'll be reading the proclamation. He has already signed the proclamation, so I'll be reading on his behalf. Before I do that, I would like to invite, this is item number six as the proclamation. I would like to invite Tracy and Dan and CPAC members to join me here up in the front. Counsel for your consideration, the proclamation, whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action, and that changes the world. And whereas volunteers can connect with the local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations. And whereas individuals and communities are set at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all our nation's social problems. And whereas National Volunteer Week was established in nineteen seventy-four and has grown exponentially each year. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas our city's volunteer force is a great treasure and is vital to the city of Capella's future as a caring and productive community. Now therefore, I, West Mays, Mayor of the city of Capella, do hereby proclaim April sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, as the Volunteer Week in the city of Capella, Texas, and urge all citizens to volunteer, inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to set out imaginative ways to engage in the community. In the witness thereof, I have set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Capella to be affixed this eleventh day of April twenty-twenty-three. Counsel Island, your comments? Counsel member Brianna Hina-Hussam Smith.
Thank you. So first, I'll make the motion, if you don't mind. I move to approve a proclamation designating the week of April sixteenth through twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, as Volunteer Week in the city of Capella and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Dawn Carroll. All in approve? All in favor?
Long, Hina Hussam, Carol Nevels, John, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Any comments from the council members? Councilmember Kevin Nevels.
That's me. First of all, thank you Mayor Protem for reading that, for everybody. What an amazing community that we live in. Our CPAC members here are just one example of the amazing commitment to volunteerism and leadership that we have in this community. We're so blessed, and I think that that's really what makes Capella the special place that it is. So I want to thank you, you guys here, that are representing our entire community of volunteers and people who give their time, efforts, and energy to make Capella an amazing place to live. Thank you.
Brianna?
Thank you, thank you Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, when I first moved to Capella in two thousand and two, the first program that I did was CPAC. And it was an amazing program and continues to be. And just love seeing everyone so engaged in our community and just seeing how much heart that y'all put into the time and commitment. So I just wanted to say personally and on behalf of city council, thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for caring so much about our community and just being passionate about giving back. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawn Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So thank you so much for volunteering, but more than that, you are an example for those that are coming behind us. And that is so crucial for us to show the next generation what it means to serve and what it means to participate in community. That's, that's one of the things my wife, Tiana, and I, whether it's at church or at school or in the city, they need, the generations behind us need to see us engaged with our communities. And y'all, y'all are the prime example and laying that groundwork for future generations. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, I saw West Mays hands going up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very sorry I couldn't be with you in person tonight, but I really think you'd want me here instead of there. So thank you for coming out tonight. And I'm just going to reflect what everybody else has said. You know, the work that our volunteers throughout the city do for the city of Capella is what makes this city special. And it's with your efforts that it is what it is. And it's the place that we want to live, work, and play. So thank you very much for all your effort and all the hard work and all the time that you put in. Thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts.
Thank you, Councilmember John June.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You know, I had just convinced them that the proclamation will be at the end so that I could keep all of them here, and they were like, okay. And then here we are already at the beginning of the other meeting. But no, thank you so much for all of that, all that you do. Exactly what it says, you guys are a great treasure. And everything that you do, I mean, every time we have an event, you guys are there, giving your hundred percent, even doing the patrols and taking some of the time, taking some of the things that, you know, that our officers have to, you know, don't have to do, right? That you guys improvise, and that is very critical. And it's really the way to contribute for everyone to see just the way, how you guys contribute to the community. And I just want to say thank you. You know, me and Mayor Protem also being a member of the CPAC, we know the value and we try to contribute as much as we can, and we see the value when we're out there too. So thank you again for everything that you do, and we ask that you continue to do what you do and, you know, set, continue to set a good example for our next generation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I really want to thank you people for coming out tonight and for all the dedication and time you spend serving the community. And then I also want to thank all the volunteers citywide for everything they do to make this city the great place that is to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cliff Long.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thanks for coming to celebrate this event. Thanks for being volunteers in this city. We really appreciate that. All of our volunteer groups contribute to making our jobs easier, and we really appreciate that. And the last thing I want to thank you for is the, and I don't know if you guys know about it or not, the things that you're going to be doing and working with us at the, at the Capella Museum that we're in the process of putting together. And so that's a, it's excellent. Now, these guys don't know what I'm talking about. But, but maybe you've been informed, probably have. And so we're really looking forward to that. So we've got a nice, we've got a nice partnership that is about to come to fruition, and we're excited about it.
Thank you. It's really a privilege and honor for me to read the proclamation. As the Councilmember John indicated, that I am also part of the CPAC and also the Citizens on Patrol. So it's really a great service that all these volunteers are doing. We do really appreciate your time and effort that you're giving to the city of Capella. Once again, we thank you for your time. At this time, I will ask city staff here to explain about the volunteer program that we have.
Mayor Protem, thank you so much, council members. Coming in to just on the city staff side, say thank you for all that you all do. There's so many hours that I've counted going into twenty-twenty-two that, that talks about the different volunteer hours that you all do and the time that you give back. And I also know that there are several other volunteer groups in the room as well. And so if you would please stand up and show us and share with us and show your faces of what you do with the city. So please stand at this time. So we say thank you. I know we have community gardens, we have our ambassadors here, we have so many other volunteer groups. We have the library board, Capella Nature Park as well. And I don't want to forget anyone, I don't have a list in front of me, but there are so many others that volunteer throughout the community. And we just want to say thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you very much. I know Dan is excited to say a few words here, right?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, I'm Dan Frye, I'm the president of the Citizens Police Academy of Capella Alumni Association. Our members also staff the Citizens on Patrol, which is the volunteer arm of the police department. It's our great honor and privilege to serve our friends and neighbors here in Capella. We gave almost four thousand volunteer hours on our time last year, but some of our members sort of volunteer other places. So our members also volunteer at the Arts Center and at Theater Capella and at the Gardens and serve on boards and commissions. This is a dedicated group, it is, as I said, our privilege to serve Capella, and it is a great privilege and an honor to have this proclamation. We thank you very much.
Can we grab the other volunteers?
Yes.
All of us. Come. Please, all volunteers, come. Volunteers walk in, please. Thank you all. Item number seven is also another proclamation. This is for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So please, the delegation from the Denton County staff, please come forward. Nikki Newton, thank you. The Denton County Friends of the Family to join in the floor. Here is the proclamation. Counsel for your consideration, whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems. In the United States alone, nearly one in five women and one in thirty-three men have been raped at some time in their lives. And one in four girls and one in six boys is sexually abused by their eighteenth birthday. Whereas sexual assault affects every adult, teen, and child in Denton and Dallas County, either as a victim survivor of sexual assault or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And whereas few survivors of sexual violence seek help immediately after victimization due to shame or fear of not being believed. To end sexual assault, we must alleviate these fears. We must begin by believing. And whereas Denton County Friends of the Family, Staff, and Volunteers, pride comprehensive and compassionate service to those impacted by sexual assault, including survivor advocate team responding twenty-four by seven to local hospitals and law enforcement agencies to support victims of sexual assault. And whereas April twenty-twenty-three makes the twenty-first anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, during which Denton County Friends of the Family will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of sexual assault, publicizing their service, emphasizing the need for increased community support for their agency, and to increase awareness of needs of survivors. Now therefore, I, West Mays, Mayor of the city of Capella, do hereby declare the month of April twenty-twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Capella and encourage all citizens to learn more about the effects of sexual assault and how to support survivors. In the witness thereof, I have set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Capella to be affixed this eleventh day of April twenty-twenty-three. Counsel? Counselmember Kevin Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to approve Agenda Item Seven and approve a proclamation designated the month of April twenty-twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Capella.
All in favor? Seconded by Councilmember Mark Hill. All in favor?
Long, Hina Hussam, Carol Nevels, John, Matthew Hill, in favor, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Councilmember Kevin Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think that this is such an incredibly important proclamation. In my line of work, I, I own martial arts schools, and part of a big push that we've done ever since we've been open nearly thirteen years is to have an annual self-defense class for young ladies, specifically our high school cross-country team who is out early in the morning, late at night, trying to get their, you know, their runs in and just talking about awareness, talking about, you know, things to do to, you know, make yourself, I guess, as, as a, as little of a target as possible. And it's so unfortunate that we have to teach that, but we do. And we have to make sure that not just young ladies, but all of our community members are aware of what to do, understand if something happens, they're not alone, and there are people that are out there. One of the most powerful things that we would do is we would almost have like these share sessions where we would have some of the, the moms in the group would come in and actually share experiences that either them or their friends have, have experienced. And it's so heartbreaking to hear some of their stories, but it's very eye-opening for our, our young ladies in the community. So thank you guys for what you do. Thank you for bringing this proclamation to light. And I hope more citizens have their eyes and ears open and make sure that we're looking out for everyone, because that's the kind of community that we are. Thank you.
Councilmember Brianna Hina-Hussam Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Nevels, but thank you all so much for being here. And I, again, I also, you know, having a son and a daughter, I think it's really important that we, you know, educate and have awareness and that we sometimes think we live in a bubble, right? Live or work or we just exist in a bubble, and the reality is that we don't, and we've just got to be aware. And so this is a very, very important topic. And I am thankful to live in a community that takes the time to make sure that we recognize April as a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember John June.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just going to echo everything that's been said already and the fact that you guys provide immediate help, you know, especially when they're at the darkest time, that is very critical and very needed. And, and like as mentioned, I know that a lot of times we think that we live in a very great city and sometimes, you know, we don't think about what happens around us. But it does happen, and bring that into light is really something that we should be all kind of appreciate and be able to support you as well. So thank you again for bringing this proclamation to us as well.
Thank you very much. I know Chief Barton is here, he wants to say a few words.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I will tell you, Friends of the Family is an unbelievable organization. They help us in so many aspects. They, from, from handling the victim on our first contact all the way to helping these victims try and get their lives back together. And I tell you, they, they work a lot and they care a lot about these, these poor victims. And I think John said right, I mean, the, this is the delight that brings them out of the darkness that they were in. And I want to commend everything you guys do. I get to see it, so I know how passionate y'all are about it. And, and it's just a wonderful organization, and you guys are doing a fantastic service to, to all communities. So thanks.
We have Nikki Newton from the Denton County Friends. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you all so much for having us here today. I know sexual assault is not something anybody wants
anybody wants to talk about. It's scary, but it's a reality. It happens in every single community across all demographics. So it's important that we raise awareness every month and let survivors know where to get resources. Most people don't know we exist until they need us. And so we want people to know that we exist and where to turn for services. So if you are a survivor in need of services, whether that be free counseling services, advocacy, we offer a whole lot of things. You can call our 24/7 crisis line at 940-382-7273. You can also text that line. Again, it is 24/7. Our team that responds to the hospitals 24/7 and to law enforcement is actually a volunteer-based team. So nice to know that Volunteer Week is coming up. I need to make sure I'm recognizing my volunteers. If you want to get involved in that, if you say, you know, I'm not volunteering enough, I need to join another group, you can learn more about that on our website at dcfof.org. And I really appreciate you all letting us be here today.
Thank you very much. That's a good pitch. A lot of volunteers are here. I'm sure they will join.
Volunteer coordinator, you are a self-servicer.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for everything you are doing. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
You need a volunteer?
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Let's get one more. Just the presentation. Oh, it's not zooming. Oh, there it did. Yes, okay. Well, we'll go back to this one. Two or three of them. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item number eight is a presentation by Police Chief Danny Barton regarding the impact of fentanyl in Capella. Chief, ask you to come forward. I want to, before you get started, I want to say that we had a regional fentanyl, I don't know what the word was, but it was a exposition put on by the DEA here in Capella back in November. And it was for the entire southwest region of the DEA. And I had no idea what the impact and extent of fentanyl was. It was eye-opening. It was sobering. It was scary. And I know that several of our council members have asked to learn more. And we're looking forward to your presentation this evening. Oh, Chief?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel, for letting me come do this. This is another, this is going to be another not happy story, I should say. So we've seen on the local news lately, we've had communities around us have been on the news for overdoses related to fentanyl. And I'll probably touch on a lot of those, but that's why I'm here today is it is happening around Capella, but I'm here to tell you it's happening in Capella as well. And I've been, I've been a police, I've been a police chief for only four years, but I've been a police officer for a lot of years. And I've never seen anything that's bugged me like this has bugged me because the trajectory that we're on is alarming. And our community has got to understand the realities of what's going on. So I'm going to just show you some national trends. And this first slide is going to be hard to read, but I'll point out the lines and what they are. So these are the national drug, the one on the left with the blue bars is the national overdose deaths by all ages 1999 through 2021. And as you can see on the last bar, it's almost 107,000. So the chart on the right, those lines represent all the different drugs that you could overdose from. The one that is jetting up is fentanyl. So you can see the trajectory fentanyl is on. I mean, it's almost going straight up. And this is just a 2021. I guarantee you when we get 2022 added, that number is going to be way higher than that. So nationally, it's a problem. And it's touching, it's touching everywhere. These slides were from the National Institute on Drug Abuse, if anybody wants to get a closer look at those. And you got to keep in mind, these are, not all overdoses are reported. So that's, that's pretty staggering. So fentanyl, the fentanyl I'm going to talk about tonight is not medical-grade fentanyl. This is fentanyl made primarily in Mexico by the cartels. They literally mix it up in heated, heated pots, basically out in the middle of pastures and whatnot. So this is a, oh, fentanyl is a synthetic opioid. Okay? So it's not heroin, heroin comes derived from the poppy plant. Fentanyl is a synthetic opioid like Percocet, hydrocodone, codeine, things like that. There are medicines with medical-grade fentanyl in them, but they're, they're used in extreme cases. Fentanyl is 50 to 100 times more powerful than morphine or heroin. And so that's, that is what is causing these spikes. So they're taking, so what happens when you take fentanyl is, is you get a euphoric rush and then you, and then you kind of get a drowsiness effect after that. And it is super addictive. That's the big thing. It's really, really addictive. So that's about a 2.2-pound bag of fentanyl right there. And they are, they can make one to five million pills with just that bag. And the, these bags are coming into the United States and then the pills are being produced here. They put fentanyl in pretty much anything you can think of right now. Although they're putting there, mixing it. And some of this is to the drug users wants and needs. They put it in marijuana and smoke it. They put it in cocaine. They put it in methamphetamines. They put it in heroin. They're putting it, you name it, they're going to, they'll put it in there. The scary part of it is, is the pills that they are producing look just like the pills that you get from your pharmacy. They have the same color. They have the same stamps on them. And you, unless you have a trained eye, you're not going to know the difference. So in law enforcement, when we come across these pills, we don't know automatically that they're fentanyl. We have to send them to a lab and confirm, is this a Percocet or is this a fentanyl? Right? So here's, here's what I'm talking about. So these are oxycodone pills on the left. These are probably, they call them, they're marked with a 30 on the back. There's an M on the other side. These are what we're seeing the most in the Dallas-Fulworth area is these, they call them M30s. The kids in Capella call them Perkeys. We have not come across the candy-looking ones yet, but I assume we will. They're just getting, they're trying to make them more attractive to the users. Like I said, they'll mix it into anything. They'll even mix it with Adderall. So you'll have an Adderall pill that looks like an Adderall pill. Adderall is a stimulant. Fentanyl is a depressant. And they'll put it in there and the unknown person, if he gets too much of this stuff, it could be fatal. And sometimes if they, if they, if you get a real Adderall pill, like they don't put real Adderall and real fentanyl together when they make these pills. They just make a fake Adderall pill. Does that make sense? So Mr. Mayor mentioned the, and this is the alarming part of things. He mentioned the DEA came down and did a presentation at our Arts Center. The presentation was for families who had lost loved ones to these fentanyl overdoses. And I believe they told us 125 families or so from the, from the region. And, and it was, it was, it was hard to hear or listen to because it was like, you know, this, this kid borrowed an Adderall pill so he can study for an exam. It was a lethal dose and he died. Or he borrowed a Percocet because so-and-so said they got it from their mom or their dad or whatever. So they, they think they're taking a hydrocodone or Xanax or whatever it is. And they have no idea that it's really fentanyl. And that's what's causing these spikes. So when they mix it, well, here I can show you how close they look. So there's a real versus fake. And really, the fake one is marked a lot clearer than the real one, which you would think it would be opposite, but it's not. So when they mix these, they bring this fentanyl powder and then they just get fillers, whatever they can get their hands on to make these pills. And it's like making chocolate chip cookies. So each, if, if the chocolate chip in the cookies is the fentanyl and you make chocolate chip cookies, you, some, some pills are going to have more, some pills are going to have less. And you don't know which one you're getting. And right now, the DEA is saying of the illegal pills or of the pills that we're seizing in law enforcement, six out of 10 have lethal doses in them. And that's why we're seeing these spikes in overdoses. So it's, it's, it's very alarming. So I'll give you a, here, I'll give you a picture of a lethal dose of fentanyl. That's the tip of a pencil. So it's just that much. All right? And then I got another one just for context. That's a penny. So that's, that's about two milligrams. Now, two milligrams would probably, anything over that's probably going to kill a first-time user. And if you're, if you're a person who's just trying to fit in or you're at a party or, or, you know, your friend says, hey, let's go take these and, and you're not a drug user, you're not a heroin addict, you're not addicted to anything else, this could be fatal. And that's what scares me. You know, people that are addicted to heroin, they have higher tolerances for some things, but we are seeing even they are overdosing because they're getting, getting too much. So I'm here tonight to tell you that, that fentanyl is in Capella. And I wanted to come here tonight and just speak truth. I don't want to sugarcoat anything. I just want to, I want to inform this community that this is a real thing, that we have got to tackle as a, as a community. So, so earlier this year, we had an 18-year-old victim die of a, of a fentanyl overdose. We don't know that he knew that he had fentanyl because he had taken a pill that looked like OxyContin and crushed it up and he was snorting it. And it killed him almost immediately. It was a very, very high dose of fentanyl. Twenty-three days later, a 21-year-old with the same looking type of pill overdosed. Twenty-three, and it hasn't been 23 days since that, since that person. We recently, we recently took fentanyl pills off, off the campus of the high school. We had to sit, again, we didn't know it was fentanyl at first. We had to send it off to the lab. And a juvenile's been charged with, with those pills. We know he's not the only person on the, in our school. It's in every school in America. This is not Capella. But I'm telling you, it is, it's in our schools. And then we've had some local area residents who have been connected to the supplying of some of these news stories that you're seeing on the news. They were residing right here in Capella. So my message is, it's here. It's plentiful. And, and our, our kids have the means to get hold of this stuff. Parents have got to engage with your kids about this. And, and I'll tell you what we're going to be doing here shortly. The Capella ISD superintendent sent out a newsletter this morning about their, their, their response to this fentanyl. I would urge everybody to read it. It's got a lot of good information. There's some good videos on there. And, and, so what are we doing in Capella? What's the Capella Police Department? So our school resource officers are, they're all trained on Narcan. We, oh, before I move on, I forgot. So our, our fire department sees more overdoses than we do. They, they get the calls at a higher rates than we do. Because sometimes they'll, they'll get the call that it's an unknown medical emergency or my son or my daughter's not breathing. And so they go, we don't get sent. And, and so I can tell you, Chief Richardson shared with me that just this year alone, they have run 11 overdoses and had to use Narcan on 10 of those. So they're opioids. And so they're, you know, we've had two deaths, which is too, too many for any community. But we're, we're, we just had an overdose this weekend. The person didn't die, but he overdosed on, on fentanyl. And the Narcan saved him. So that's what our, our school resource officers, they have Narcan. They have plenty of Narcan with them. They know how to use it. They're, they're super engaged with these students. That's, their messaging is on point. If you remember, the City of Capella, along with actually the state's, there was a big settlement with all the opioid-producing pharmacies and some of the, like the pharmacy providers. And Capella did receive some funds in that settlement. And we're, we intend to use those funds to start a citywide, we're going to use a professional advertising company to start educating this community. And I talked to one of the potential vendors today on a call and he said, what do you want? And I said, I don't want anyone in Capella to not know this is happening. And, and I want everyone to know that they got to take it serious. It could be your kid. We, none of us think it's going to be our kid. But again, these are accidental overdoses. So it's, they got to know. We've got to educate. And then we, of course, we continue to train our officers. Our officers all, all carry Narcan as well. We're staying up with the trends. We know there's another, and I don't want to get into it tonight. You guys got a lot of business to do tonight, but there's more trends happening within the fentanyl world that are changing the game. We got stuff that's coming in that's not, Narcan's not working on. And then we are going to build a, a resource page on our city website and try to give our community as mu, as many resources as we can. Pictures, what to do, I mean, anything I can throw at it. In the meantime, while we're building that, if you want to use the DEA's website, they have a ton of information on it. And so does the CDC when it comes to fentanyl. You can Google just DEA fentanyl and you will get lots and lots and lots of information. And then finally, we plan to do some town hall meetings. I've been approached by a couple of community, community groups and we were planning on meeting with them. I have several officers that have attended some more advanced training on what's going on. DEA is providing that training. So we have all the resources we need to get the message out and, and to keep it current. And so, so that, we, we plan to do as many town halls as this community can, can let us do. And I would say, if any community group or organization in City of Capella wants us to come talk to you and your organization about this, maybe on an even deeper level, we'd be more than happy. Just call us and we will be there. This is, this is a big deal. This is, this is a big deal. I will say, this is not a, this is not a problem that the police can solve alone. We're not going to arrest our way out of this issue. That's, we've never been able to do that as a nation or as a society. We will do our part. I can tell you that we have aggressive investigations that are ongoing right now, but we will do our part. But that's not going to solve anything. The problem is about being informed and making choices. And I told the advertising guy that today. That's, that's the, that's the tone I want to give, is if you're informed, you got to make the best choice. Because it's, it's about demand. This is a supply and demand problem. And if there's no demand, And if there's no demand, there's no supply. And I know I'm not crazy enough to think that we'll ever get to zero demand, but let's, let's do the best we can to get it as low as we can. Because it's gonna be more than talking to our kids. It's gonna be knowing who your kids hang out with. It's gonna be searching their rooms when they're not looking. It's not a trust issue. It's a parent, you're the parent. And, you know, you may find some things, and you gotta pick your battles when you, when you do. So there's no silver, there's no single solution to this problem. There's no checkboxes. Every family's gotta attack this themselves. And then, as we say at the Capella Police Department, it takes a community to keep this community safe. And that's what this is about, is we are gonna do everything, we're, they're gonna get tired of me talking about fentanyl in this community. And, because I don't want to get an email that we've just had another fentanyl overdose. And we've had two too many this year. We had a few last year as well. But it's, it's just spiking right now at an alarming rate. And our community needs to know about it. Our parents need to know about it. It's not just teenagers. Fentanyl's the number-one killer of adults, 18 to 45 right now, in, in, of everything, more than car wrecks, everything. So this is a, this is a national problem, for sure, but all we can work on is Capella. And with that, I'll take questions. Oh, shoot. Mr. Carroll? Or do I pick? Or do you?
You move it.
Councilmember Nevels.
You were clearly first. I, I wanna acknowledge that publicly. Chief, thank you for coming up and talking to us about this. I believe, as I look around the makeup of this council, a majority of us have children in schools right now. And so I think I would be safe to say that this entire council takes this very seriously, not only for the safety of the young people and citizens in our community, but just personally as well. So what do you need from us? I'm, I'm, I think that's a fair question. I mean, you obviously have our, my support in terms of what resources you need, but what, what else can we do? I, I think you've got a great plan there, but there's gotta be more than, that we can do.
I think, I think the biggest thing, I mean, you're, you have a presence in this community. And I would use that presence to, to spread this message. And just, we, we can't make it, we can't let it die. We can't let it go, you know, just kinda drift off, you know, just because you haven't heard anything from the police department in a few months, thinking that it's, it's, it's all over with. So you guys have been supportive. I think we have everything we need going forward, for sure. But, and I, I'm comfortable enough to know that if I need, needed something else, I could come in here and, and, and be supported. So I appreciate that.
I can give you my reassurance that you will have my support on everything you need. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Carroll, I apologize if I got you out of order.
No, no problem. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation and just the awareness. When we had an incident, you know, not far from our border, happened not too long ago, it certainly was a little bit eye-opening for me, and certainly being the, the father of three middle-school, elementary kids. More, the, the tragedy are the overdoses and the deaths, but there's also tragedy in the ones that just become addicted, and maybe unknowingly become addicted, because it is in some form that they were not expecting that they were getting some powerful drug like this, and the repercussions of that over a lifetime. So thank you for what you were doing as far as awareness in this community. And I know that is the key. And same with Chief Richardson, you know, and, and your, your team, on what, as you see things develop and evolve, because, like you said, it's spiking, and I, I assume this is gonna be a marathon, not a, an event. And so as things do progress, and you see new evidence or new information, I, I would echo what Councilmember Nevels said, and please come back with additional resources, or programs, or personnel, or whatever, whatever it is that makes sense, to help us ensure the public safety is as cohesive and as safe as it can be in this community. And you're right, we can never get, unfortunately, we live in this world, and we're never gonna get to zero. But getting more and more attention on public safety, I, I think is, is crucial. And this is, appears to be a different animal than what we have seen in, in, in past. As related to drugs, you know, in, in past iterations, this is different than what we've seen before. So thank you for what you're doing, and please come back with whatever suggestions or whatever recommendations we need. Thanks.
I will. Thanks, sir.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor, Chief. Thank you for the presentation. You had mentioned we are go, you are going to use the settlement amount to advertise, and you also had mentioned town hall meetings. Have you planned out anything yet for the town hall for the community?
We haven't planned any out. The, the couple that have reached out to me, you know, I'm just kinda gearing up for those. And then I think once we start to really push the message, you know, and it's great that the ISD is pushing it right along with us, I think that'll stir up a lot more interest, so that we can pack those town halls in.
You had mentioned the school resource officer is also engaged. Are they conducting any type of town hall for kids in high school?
They are. So we're, we're starting that Friday. All the students at the high school will be attending assemblies. Our resource officers will be doing a piece of that. And then they have various other components to, to bring awareness to the kids. I can tell you, ISD told us the other day that they did a focus group with some students, and they showed them some of the stuff I just shared with you, with, with different resources. And the, the students were unaware of how deadly it was. They knew it was out there, and they know that, you know, there's perks and all these, perkeys, what they call them. But they were unaware of how deadly they were. So it was eye-opening, and hopefully, starting Friday, we'll, we'll open their eyes even more.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you so much for all the information that you provided. It is really eye, eye-opening. Learned a lot just by your presentation today. And I'm gonna echo what all the council members, you know, mentioned about having, giving you full support. We want the community to understand and know about the problem that we have here. But you also mentioned about, you know, having some town hall, waiting for people to reach out. But I would say, let's not just wait, but also be proactive and reach out to many of the org, you know, community organizations that we have, and also maybe even H.O.A. and so forth. And you also mentioned about us being an advocate, and, and, and I'm sure we'll all advocate about the awareness. But, you know, personally, if you have the meetings that's going on, you know, let us know. And if we could be there, we'll be there, and we will advocate as much as we can. I know that, you know, in our house, for sure, something like this, my child doesn't come back and say, oh, we heard about this. Well, part of that is, maybe he doesn't tell us everything. But it just goes to saying that they don't, we don't talk about it enough at, at our household, and I'm sure that's also the same in any other household. So we wanna make it a top priority to, you know, make everyone, make sure everyone understands, even if it's not being discussed at the house, but at least they know not to be taking something that's been given by maybe the friends that they trust, or anything like that. So, again, we're, I, you know, I support 100%, but let us know when we can provide what type of, you know, support, and, and I'll gladly be there, and make my, make time to be there as, as, as much as I can.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. John. So, one of the organizations that, as, I shouldn't have said organizations, the school district, I talked to Principal Laura Springer, and she, we're planning on putting on a town hall for parents. And, and I'll be at that one as well. So, we got something coming pretty quick.
Yeah, for sure. The parents, again, we don't talk about it, but a lot of the parents, they, they don't know what's going on in school, and they don't know about these informations. So for sure, parents need to be educated. I need to be educated, I, you know, so that I could tell more people about this as well. So, yeah.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brianna, I'm your assistant.
Thank you, Mayor. That was, well, first of all, thank you so much for this presentation. And I know you're like, oh, y'all have a lot of business. This is extremely important. Any life lost is one too many. This, this gives me chills, and I think, I, I appreciate the fact that so much is being done. I saw the email today from Superintendent Hunt, so much is being done to make sure that students are hearing the message. But I think a lot of it also has to be for the parents, and that they're open about having those conversations, and not feeling like we live in a bubble, and it's not gonna happen to our kids. And I, I was gonna, my question was gonna be, like, what are we doing for, for parents? So I appreciate the fact that Principal Springer's doing something. And then I think I was, I was just gonna say, if you can think of any other ways for us to bring parents together, I feel like a lot of times, it's the same people that are coming forward, but we've gotta make sure that we're getting that message out. And what came to mind, too, is the fact that right now, I, I know for a fact that there is a national shortage on Adderall. And so, because my son recently had to switch medications because of the shortage. And so if you have someone at the school saying, hey, I can get you an Adderall, right?
Right.
Kids don't know, and they think, oh, hey, look, I can take an Adderall. I know that helps me get through that next test, not realizing that they're not really getting an Adderall. And so I think that's the key, too, is that we're also getting that message across of just don't take anything from anybody unless they're a parent or a medical personnel at the school. And so, anyway, all that to say is, thank you. Obviously, you have our full support. And if you have any ideas and thoughts that we can help execute, please let us know.
I will, and I'll have them.
Councilmember Carroll.
I forgot to mention a while ago, I think it is so important, the SROs that we have. You mentioned the SROs. They have a connection with these kids that sometimes the parents, unfortunately, do not. And I, I know it's not a replacement for the parents, but I, I just wanted to tell whether if Officer Boyd, or Officer Mitchell, or any of our great SROs, thank you for being that connection point, and potentially, sort of that light for that child that maybe is on a path that shouldn't be on. So just, I just wanted to reiterate that I very much appreciate the dedication and the love for our kids that these SROs have. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. They are the best.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Nevels.
I have to, I do have to let everybody know that I'm looking at my SRO from my time at Capella High School right now. So amazing, those life connections and how that kinda comes around. One final thought was that I know that you, as, you know, police department in connection with the SROs, you know, you're connected with the school district. But if there's any, you know, additional connection that needs to be made with us and the trustees, I think that this is an important issue. I'd be willing to say that, I imagine that we would all be willing to come to the table and talk about this as a bigger issue, because as we talk about the community of Capella, I mean, we know how important the school district is to that, and not even just Capella ISD, but our surrounding districts, our, you know, our surrounding communities, you know, just whatever we can do to coordinate efforts, to collaborate, to share resources, ideas. I, you know, I, I'm assuming that you're already, you know, going that way, but got my full support on whatever we need to do for that. So.
Thanks, sir.
Counsel, any other comments? Well, Chief, thank you very much. My first inclination was to say, how can we help? And every one of the council members that spoke said the same thing. So I think you're hearing a, a very repeated thought there. The one thing that I'll commit to is that Councilmember John June and I will make sure that the police department is invited to speak before the Lions Club on fentanyl. And maybe we can coerce Mayor Potem Matthews to have you speak before the Rotary Club. And if we reach out to our respective organizations, our lunch groups, our church groups, our breakfast groups, we can begin to get the word out that way. So thanks for the offer. And like everyone said here, let us know what we can do to further the cause.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You. Okay. Item number nine is citizen's appearance. We do have several persons that have signed up to speak tonight. So persons wishing to speak on any matter other than an item scheduled on the agenda must sign a register with the city secretary and list their address. Presentations made by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. Individual speaker time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks. Any speakers shall be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and, and request the mayor and council if they would like to extend the speaker's time to an additional two, two minutes. This evening, we're gonna have Ms. Owens call the speakers in the order that they signed up.
Ashley.
Thank you, Mayor. The first person signed up to speak we have tonight is Barbara Bailey. Ms. Bailey?
Hi, Barbara Bailey, 232 Plantation. I am here about the sidewalks, but I just wanted to say something, if you'll indulge me in a little bit extra time, about what the police chief just said. Something that, I had four kids, and something that helped me is I would tell them my experiences with running across drugs that I wasn't anticipating. Like, for example, one time I was helping someone get ready for a party, and I was dusting, and it turned out that was, what I was dusting and threw out was cocaine, and I didn't even know it. I mean, there's all kinds. So I found that telling my kids these stories of what happened with me, real-life stuff, personal stuff, and maybe if the, the city, or the school, or the police, I don't know who, but could get, like, stories of real life, this is how I ran into this, or this is what happened to me at this time. I mean, that's what I did with my kids. And I, I was lucky, okay? Everybody was fine. Nobody did all that stuff. But it's very easy to accidentally, like I said, I'm, I was dusting, cleaning up, and it turned out it was, they were upset with me because I threw out all this cocaine. I didn't know it was even there. And I didn't know I was going to a party that was had cocaine. I mean, you just find yourself sometimes in these situations that you don't anticipate, and you're not ready for. And that's what, anyway, that's what helped me with my kids, is what I did. And I think if people can tell, maybe the city could have, I mean, someone like myself, or somebody else, real stories of things that, where they ran into a situation, and how they got out of it, that kind of thing. Because it's very hard being a kid, you know? It's probably harder now with social media. But anyway, I just wanted to throw that out. Nothing to do with what I'm here for.
Name and address, please.
But if you could, if I could do my two minutes on this, I just wanted to say that because I thought it might be helpful. Can you give me my two minutes?
Name and address, please.
Because I, you know, I don't want anybody's kid hurt.
Ms. Bailey?
Anyway, I'm...
Ms. Bailey, would you just mind saying your name and your address?
Oh, again? Okay, Barbara Bailey, 232 Plantation.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here about the, the sidewalks in Capella, particularly on Plantation Drive. And I provided the city with multiple documents and information that the ADA return curbs and traffic islands installed along Plantation Drive and elsewhere in the city are unsafe and labeled as trip hazards by most municipalities and states, including the state of Texas. And instead of the recommended ADA flare sides to the curb ramps, and not only are statistically considered trip hazards for pedestrians, but cost over two times the amount of the safer and recommended flare sides. The flare sides require little or no maintenance, and last for about 30 years. The return curbs, curbs not only cost twice as much, but require constant glossy maintenance in Old Town and along Sandy Lake and Freeport. They're already deteriorating with the rebar sticking out at the corners because they just deteriorate fast. The traffic islands in the, that the city installed along Plantation Drive, along with the return curbs, those cost almost four times as much to install. They're very dangerous for pedestrians and bicycles. And the city put reflectors on there just in the last week or so. And, but you have to have a flashlight to see them at night. And sometimes when you look at them, they also, you can't tell whether it's flat, or it's, it, the reflector is showing... flat or it's, the reflector is showing sticking up. So I am just here about, hope you guys, you know, eliminate them and put in the flare sides that are cheaper, maintenance-free, and much safer for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thanks for the extra time.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
So Mayor, I did just want to make a quick announcement. Citizens who wish to speak on item number 14 does not, they do not have a public hearing. So if you would like to speak during, if you'd like to speak about item number 14, you'll need to speak during citizens' appearance. So, once we're done with the list, I will call those who wish to do that. Okay? The next speaker is Sue McCarthy. Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
If you'll state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Sue McCarthy. I live at 456 Woodway. And I would like to make a comment about the fentanyl as well, since that is a very serious issue, that if you do a quick Google search, the biggest entry into the United States is through our borders, which we have two major borders where that can enter our state and be distributed throughout the United States. So, these, closing up the borders and, you know, being active at a grassroots level and being very vocal about closing our borders and sending more money to the borders to protect this issue of fentanyl even entering the United States. It's produced in China and it's transported through our borders from Mexico. And then, the agenda, what was item 14?
The permit for demolition.
Permits for demolition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The main thing that I wanted to talk about today is these smart cities that are being pushed in Capella. I'm highly against it. It's proven that it costs more money to get these rare earth minerals out of the ground to produce these batteries for these smart city, you know, agenda than it is that the money you're gonna save. Plus, these cars, if you don't get them charged every two hours, then you're kind of stranded. So, and I'm opposed to the surveillance that's proposed through these automated, you know, like Robocop for the police department, the fire department, is that what we're going to? If you are in a completely smart city that's all electrical, what happens when the grid goes down? Can you leave the city? I mean, I think it's a waste of money to even pursue this goal. There is all kinds of technology that's being proposed. Even President Trump just recently said that there are engineers working on vertical, vertical takeoff.
If you want to just wrap it up, the time is up.
Okay, vertical takeoff cars. So, any money spent on a smart grid with 5G towers everywhere is a waste of our money. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next up is Phil LaBerge.
Thank you, sir. Can you state your name and your address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Philip LaBerge, 858 Down Alley Lane. I'd first like to ask if I could get the two-minute extension for a total of four minutes. I'd like to first say thank you for letting me talk. And second, I'd like to say I hope our mayor recovers and comes back soon. He's a great guy. I had the good opportunity to attend the two meeting, two focus group meetings on the Veterans Plaza that was held by Jessica Carpenter here as we sat up in the conference room looking out over the plaza in the back of the building. Just wanted to spend a couple of minutes and talk about that. I handed out a package to you all that includes some plans that I drew up both at Andy Brown Park and also shows the location of the two plans behind the city. First of all, I'd like to say I think Veterans Plaza should be, should have a bold vision and a big impact. That's one of our main city goals. And I think, you know, for this project, it's especially important. I really believe, after having been to many veterans' plazas and memorials around the country, that they shouldn't be like cemeteries where you only go to the memorial rarely or on special events like Memorial Day or the Fourth of July. It really ought to be in a place like the National Mall. I used to live in Washington DC when my father worked at the Pentagon for many years. I used to walk on the National Mall. I'd see people jogging and taking a moment to stop and reflect and pay tribute at the Vietnam Memorial, the World War I Memorial, the World War II Memorial, the Korean Memorial. I'd see parents walking with their children, stopping to read stories about those who served and paid the ultimate price. I saw elderly vets in wheelchairs saluting and remembering their war experiences. It's an opportunity to pay tribute to the wounded warriors and the people that served, to people like Jake Schick, who attended Capella High School and was a wounded warrior, to people like Carol Kirkland, who was killed in action in Germany in World War II. I think our Veterans Memorial, when I think of it, I can imagine huge crowds gathering to celebrate our nation and pay tribute to those who defended it, while looking at the monuments and flags lit up in full display while watching fireworks. This is a great opportunity for us. We shouldn't put it in a cemetery. We should put it on a National Mall. We should put it on our mall at Andy Brown Park. When I attended the focus group meetings, we had a total of five vets at the first focus group meeting. We looked at it at the back and thought it was a great idea. I did. In fact, I was one of the ones that said it was a great idea. But then I went and I talked to my general practitioner who's a vet, and he said, really, it shouldn't be there. It should be at Andy Brown Park where there are lots of people that could see it, walk by it, experience it. I proposed two locations, one at the ellipse as you walk into Andy Brown Park. And then the other one I realized is that the perfect location is really at the Performance Pavilion where our thousands collect and sit on the Fourth of July and watch the fireworks being shot off to our east. Looking out over the Performance Pavilion, that we could rename Veterans Pavilion. At that Veterans Pavilion, we could have monuments for each of the service branches with flags lit up for each of the service branches. We could have a statue for Jake Schick. We could have a statue for Carol Kirkland. As you watch the fireworks, we could sit in the crowd and see the fireworks blasting shot off in the air with the flags lit up, you know, celebrating this.
Mr. LaBerge, if you just want to wrap it up?
I'll wrap it up. Really like to, just to conclude, that I really don't want us to make a mistake, and I really want us to live up to our goals of a bold vision in creating something that has a big impact. I really urge you, when this comes to city council on the 25th, that we have options at Andy Brown Park and not just behind City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Delbert Dagel. Mr. Dagel, if you wouldn't just mind stating your name and your address?
My name is Delbert Dagel, 220 Long Meadow Drive, Capella. I'm here to provide some support to Phil. My background's in education, so that's kind of the approach I'm gonna take. I also agree that the Veterans Park should be in a location that's visible and accessible. And I can see parents coming and spending hopefully some time with their children, whether they're elementary age, middle school, high school, college age, and talking about the different branches of the military, but the sacrifices that the soldiers made and also their families. But also, from an educational point of view, if it's in a location that allows school groups to come, school groups, I can envision being able to go in and have their teachers, elementary, middle, and high school, talk about the different branches of the military, talk about the conflicts that the United States has been involved in since the beginning of this country. I can also envision that we develop lesson plans, put those lesson plans on our website, and have teachers be able to access those lesson plans at the different grade levels. I think it's critical that we not forget about soldiers that served our community, but also, I think we can extend it on to school groups. And if you look at different websites, whether they're through the Smithsonian, NASA, Colonial Williamsburg, they put all these lesson plans online and teachers use them. And it's free to the public. So, again, I'm here to support Phil, but to really encourage you to give really meaningful thought to location and to be able to extend it also into school groups. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. George Pyramoff. Sir, if you wouldn't just mind stating your name and your address for the record?
Yes. George Pyramoff. I live at 1721 East Belt Line Road in Capella Apartment 626.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mays, members of the city council, city manager Land, and all the attendees. For me, tonight is a very somber occasion. We might lose something that should be held dear by all of us. The key word is heritage. I fear that Capella might lose its heritage tonight. Capella is a mature town now and must remember its heritage. The designation Old Town might lose its significance. The historic place markers on Bethel Road and the history on these historic markers will lose a lot of their significance when the old church, its annex, and the old shops across Bethel Road will all eventually be replaced by modern buildings. The old church and its annex on the corner of Bethel Road and Main Street could be renovated into artisans' working studios and galleries. The old church and its historic marker remind us of the history of the First United Methodist Church of Capella and its untold number of endeavors on behalf of the citizens of the city of Capella. The former schoolhouse's history leads us to the beloved Pinkerton School. The historic Kirkland House built in 1904 and the New Year's Grocery Store with a history dating back to 1932 need complementary structures to remain a destination like Heritage Park or Capella Museum, and for Old Town to be called Old Town. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Next up on our list is Jennifer Mendola. Ms. Mendola? Okay. All right. Next on our list is Peter, and I apologize, I cannot read the last name, in regards to Veterans Memorial. All right. Next up is Mr. Joe Shirley.
Joe Shirley, 582 Villawood Lane. I'm totally against tearing the old church and the annex down. That's very, very few of the old buildings in Capella are left. And I think it's, we need to preserve a little bit of our history. Most everything has been torn down. We have a historic district, but history has shown that historic district means that everything's eventually going to be torn down or remodeled beyond recognition. And I think it's critically important that we preserve what we can of what's left. The, on the agenda item B, or the consent agenda item B, is a list for $810,490 to redo the duck pond park. And I think the city would be well-served to spend some money to make sure that the church and the annex are preserved and that they can be used for quality use within the city and preserve some of our, some of our history. Because otherwise, it's all gonna be gone. And, you know, we might as well not call it a historic district anymore. We might as well just call it a redevelopment district. Instead of calling it Old Town Capella, let's call it Newtown Capella. I just really would appreciate it if y'all consider doing something so that we can preserve the church and the annex and keep it fundamentally like it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our list. Is there anybody who would like to speak who didn't have a chance to sign up to speak? Okay, Mayor Mays?
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Next is item number 10, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be ruled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, is there anything that you would like to discuss or have pull?
Thank you, Mayor. I move, move to approve item number 10, the consent agenda, items A through E.
Second, by Councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Long Keenan Smith, Carol Neves, Jen Matthew, all in favor? None opposed. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number 11 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And I'm gonna ask Valencia Gilbert to read the item into the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Valencia Gilbert, Recreation Coordinator at the Corps. This is routine in nature as an annual review process in order to exempt, to be exempt from the state of Texas licensing process for youth camps. The Camp Do-It-All program is not licensed by the state of Texas. Therefore, we abide by standards of care they put in place for municipal recreation programs. No changes have been made to the standards this year. Camp Do-It-All is a very successful day camp program offered for children ages six to 12 years old. The program is offered during all Capella major, all Capella ISD holidays, including summer Thanksgiving, winter holiday, and spring break, for a total of 15 weeks out of the year, in which almost every week is highly sought after. We hold the camp at the Corps during the school holidays, and summer is held at a local elementary school, which is currently Denton Creek Elementary. Every year, we serve over 1,600 children combined through these breaks. We consistently have positive feedback from our community about our programs and the amenities it offers. Tonight, we are recommending approval of the camp standards of care for 2023, therefore asking for you to approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We have no one signed up to speak for the public hearing, so Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Gilbert? Counselor Member Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and to approve Agenda Item 11 as presented.
Second by Counselor Member Kenoza Smith. All in favor?
Long, Kenoza Smith, Carol, Neves, Jen, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask Steve Schubert to read this into the record and describe what we're seeing.
Good evening. The proposal is to amend Section 15-2 of our city ordinance to adopt the 2023 National Electoral Code, as well as amending our electoral chapter for the city. It has been recommended that we table the motion for the evening and reschedule for vote on April 25th.
All right. Thank you very much. We have one speaker that has signed up to speak tonight. Ms. Owens, would you, oh, persons wishing to speak during this public hearing must sign and register with the address. You have a call to speak under order. You have registered as a public hearing. You're limited to five minutes per speaker. Ms. Owens?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sue McCarthy for item number 12?
I'm going to decline at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, she decided to decline.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, we need a motion to defer to a date certain of April 25th, I believe. Counselor Member Kenoza Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I move to table item 12 to a, to April 25th?
Continue.
Oh, to continue, item 12 to April 25th.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Member Neves. All in favor?
Long, Kenoza Smith, Carol, Neves, Jen, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask Ms. Boswell to read the item into the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 13 is a public hearing. It's to consider approval of PD 250R 28-H, Main Street, Old Town, a zoning change request from H to PD 250R 28-H to add this property to the conceptual plan development for the Main Street, Old Town project, creating seven lots with six proposed two-story buildings, two mixed-use professional office and residential, one mixed-use medical office, retail, restaurant, and residential, and two mixed-use retail restaurant and one residential, one retail restaurant, and one common parking lot on 0.946 acres of land located on the southwest corner of Main Street and West Bethel Road.
Before we proceed with that, also, I think last time, when this issue came before the council, I wanted to remind council that this is the zoning case, so we need to talk about zoning-related issues such as density, building mass, design, traffic, pedestrian traffic, compatibility, and related topics, and, because we don't have a public hearing on the demolition permit. So, and people were encouraged to speak about that during the citizens' comments, so if you would keep your focus on the zoning-related issues, it probably will make this item a little, go a little easier for you and bring some clarity to your deliberations. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. So, item 13, so, this site is located just southwest, at the southwest corner of West Bethel Road and Main Street, and is just under an acre in size. In December of 2022, a request for this site failed by a vote of three to four before City Council. That request included seven lots. Three were office with a residential component, two with retail with a residential component, one completely retail, and one common parking lot. So, this new proposal before you this evening will have seven lots as well, containing six buildings, five which will be mixed-use, and one that will be mixed-use, when I say mixed-use, meaning some kind of commercial with retail, with residential component, one retail, a restaurant building, and a parking lot. So, mixed-use, meaning that the commercial and residential uses have separate entrances and can have separate occupancies. So, Buildings 1 and 2 are mixed-use and will front West Bethel Road. It will be office with a residential above. Building 3, which is at the corner, and will be commercial on both floors, so some combination of retail and restaurant. All other buildings, except for this one, will have a residential component. Buildings 4 and 5 will front Main Street and be mixed-use with some form of retail, restaurant, with residential above. And Building 6 will front Main Street and be mixed-use with some combination of retail, restaurant, medical office with residential above. The main change from the previous submittal to this submittal is the proposed uses for the buildings, with restaurant uses being added to Buildings 3 through 6, and the addition of medical office and retail to Building 6. They will have a similar spacing as the buildings to the south. The residential portion will be located on the second floor and will have two garage spaces on the ground level, access from the rear of the lot. Lot 7X is not developable and will be solely used as a parking lot. This will be part of the PD conditions. A sidewalk will be built along Bethel Road, connecting sidewalks will be constructed from the proposed Lot 7X parking lot to the street frontages via four-foot sidewalk easement located in between each buildings. No signs have been imposed with this development. So, parking for the site will be a combination of parking proposed on Lot 7X, which will be required with the construction of the first building, on-street parking on Main Street, garage parking, and parking spaces from the existing public parking lot nearby. Using the most intense uses, the parking required would be 118 spaces. This is versus the 74 previously required. So, obviously, this number varies with the type of uses proposed. So, this is based on having restaurants within all of them. So, restaurant requires the most amount of parking, so like one per 100 square foot, versus retail is one per 200, and office is one per 300. So, obviously, depending on what happens in terms of uses, the parking will fluctuate. So, this site is proposed to be added to the conceptual plan development for the Old Town Main Street project and the existing POA for maintenance of the parking lot and amenities, which include benches, dumpster, trash receptacles, et cetera. So, there are no changes proposed to the landscape plans from the previous submittal. Existing hackberry and crepe myrtle trees interior to the site are proposed to be removed, as well as bur oak, which is in poor condition. A tree removal permit will be required to remove trees on-site. There are also some hackberry trees that will need to be removed to provide access to the site through the existing city parking lot located south of this, of this site, where the applicant will need to coordinate with the Community Experiences Department. The developer will be planting additional overstory trees on-site. Per the landscape plans provided, they will add additional cedar elm, Chinese pistache, lace bark elm, Texas red oaks planted throughout the site. The yards will have a variety of landscaping that includes trees, grass, shrubs, ground covers, with a focus being on the front yards towards the street. The parking lot, Lot 7X, will also have trees located in the islands and western perimeter. The building lots have a range of 32% to 36% landscaping, which exceeds what is required. For the developer, the POA will maintain all landscaping on-site. So, as I mentioned, this, this development will contain six buildable lots that share common design elements and materials. They are in compliance with this historic design guidelines. Each of the buildings will be two-story, with heights varying from roughly 28 feet to just under 35 feet. So, we start with Building 1, which is the most westerly building on Bethel, and as you move towards 3, which is at the corner of Bethel and Main, and then from 3 down to 6 goes down Main Street. So, what's different from this proposal from the last one, Building 1's height is increased two feet, and Building 6's height has decreased four feet from the previous submittal. So, these renderings are actually older renderings, so if this project is approved, they will have to update the renderings to show those height differences. The material board shows a color palette to be used on the buildings within the development. There'll be a common shingle, brick, and stone to be used within the structures, as well as building trims in accent color. The siding and trims will be cement fiberboard lap siding and shingle look siding, with wood or insulated steel front doors painted to match the trim. The two-car garage doors will be decorative insulated metal in the arts and crafts style. More detailed information is provided on the elevations themselves for Buildings 1 through 6. A rendering with some different views has also been provided. So, these are renderings of the development from different view corridors. The bottom center ones show the existing versus the proposed view on north on Main. So, the Capel Master Plan done in 2002 states that it uses a mix of zoning that will accommodate a rich variety of uses. It states that the land use plan shown should remain flexible to adapt to changing market conditions. So, mixed-use, retail, and service concentration is identified in the red. The plan states that retail and service uses should be concentrated in the core of Old Capel along Bethel and Capel Roads, identified by the red color. Uses such as specialty retail are critical to generating pedestrian traffic in the study area. In the case of multi-story buildings, office and residential uses are appropriate for the upper floors. Being a mixed-use category, uses such as office and residential are permitted. So, this slide is taken from the 2002 Old Capel Master Plan and represents a visual simulation. So, to the left is the existing condition back in 2002, and basically, the plan, these are the plan's words, not mine. Capel Road looking south to Bethel Road intersection. The existing condition has deficiencies both functionally and aesthetically. Functionally, there are not enough buildings to generate a critical mass and create a vibrant and economically healthy commercial district. The lack of sidewalk discourages pedestrian activity, and overhead wiring creates visual clutter. And then to the right is, is the proposed condition along the same corridor. And I'm just going to show you some pictures of what is actually out in Old Town currently, and based on the Old Town Master Plan. So, the proposed condition transformed the existing condition to a highly desirable environment. The compatible new infill development reinforces the district's character, provides building enclosure for more comfortable street, and will generate activity and greater economic prosperity. The new streetscape will be attractive to pedestrians, and the on-street parking provides a buffer between the pedestrians and moving vehicles. Other improvements include human-scale streetlights, trees, and planters. So, this is a zone change request, and we did, we were required to mail notices to property owners within 200 feet, as well as courtesy notices to property owners within 800 feet. We did receive, in response to this last mailing, eight in favor within the 200 feet and two opposed within the 200 feet, and additional two in favor within the 800 feet. And those can be identified on this map. The upper left shows that within the 200 feet with the green in favor and the red opposed, and the bottom right showing the 800-foot mailout. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request subject to the following conditions. One, there may be additional comments during detailed engineering review. Two, the final plaque cannot be filed until buildings have been removed. Three, tree removal permit will be required prior to construction. Four, to coordinate with the Community Experiences Department for the removal of off-site trees and relocation of irrigation south of Lot 7X to allow for the access via the city's parking lot. Five, Lot 7X Block A, Main Street, Old Town Edition shall only be used for parking. Six, Lot 7X Block A, Main Street, Old Town Edition will not have street frontage, but will be accessible via an access easement, which will be required between Lot 7X, Block A, Main Street, Old Town Edition, and the city of Capel. Seven, existing 15 parking spaces on Main Street in front of this development shall be counted for this development on the condition that this development becomes part of the Old Town POA. Eight, that existing parking spaces in the Old Town area should be counted towards this development on the condition that this development becomes part of the Old Town POA. Nine, the POA shall be responsible for maintenance of the common area, proposed Lot 7X Block A, Main Street, Old Town Edition, and all landscaping. Ten, all signage must comply with H District ordinance requirements. Eleven, that Building 3, which is the corner building, will not have any residential uses, but may have a commercial occupancy on the second floor. Twelve, that the maximum building height shall not exceed 35 feet above finished floor. Thirteen, that the POA shall maintain all amenities, including benches, dumpster, trash receptacles, bicycle racks, sidewalk easements between buildings, et cetera. Fourteen, the POA shall maintain the private drainage easement. And fifteen, that they submit a letter from the Old Town POA stating that they will accept this development in their POA and all of the responsibilities and conditions stated above. So, that is the end of my presentation. The applicant is here as well. Here to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Boswell?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Member Hill?
Do the designs that are presented, do they meet the 60% glazing requirements that are in the historical district?
I believe they do, sir.
So, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't see any calculation, so I was just trying to eyeball and figure out that they actually...
We will double-check that for you.
Thank you.
Mayor Burgeon Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for the presentation. Question is, I'm looking at the site plan, detailed site plan, and I'm looking at Building 4, Building 5, and Building 6.
Yes, sir.
Comparing that to December presentation site plan. The only difference I see there is added a restaurant. Is that the only change that we are seeing?
Right. So, with Buildings 3 through 6, the change was the addition of a restaurant, and then with Building 6, there was some additional uses, like the medical office and the retail as well.
Yeah. So, in the December meeting, we already had office there.
Correct.
And the retail. I'm sorry.
I don't believe it had retail on that one.
It was residential, yeah. Office and residential, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Hina Hosses Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I think along that same line, just for clarity on my end, so One and Two are office residential...
Correct.
Could those be at a later time? Could the PDB change to restaurant or other use?
So they would have to come back through the process because One and Two are specifically office with residential. The restaurant component was added to the other buildings.
To the other ones, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I was just trying to understand, too, the process that, like, there are possibilities for the owners to come back at a later time and turn Three into, I guess, you tell me, like, number Three from retail restaurant to residential?
With that one, no, because they don't have the parking, like, the garage.
Okay.
So the other units, One, Two, Four, Five, and Six...
Are the only ones?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry, those are the only ones that can be residential, so Three cannot be turned into residential, but the office residential, One and Two, could come back through the process and go and be asked to be restaurant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill.
You mentioned that there had been a reduction in height on which buildings?
So Building, let's see here, Building One is actually two feet taller and Building Six is four feet shorter than what was presented in the last proposal.
Okay, and does, do the black and white elevations reflect that? How's that change?
Yes, the black and white elevation should reflect that. It's just the rendering that was not updated.
Okay, because I know there was some concern about the scale of the building, you know, being overpowering for the context of the Old Town, so I was hoping we'd see something a little bit reduced in height. You know, four feet does help some, but, you know, it's still a two-story building, whereas the rest of the original Old Town was one-story with dormers.
So the buildings just south of, like, this Number Six are actually 30 feet and 26 feet, so they are slightly taller.
Yeah.
Then the buildings along Bethel to the west of this, say they can't, are roughly around 32 feet. They aren't taller than 32 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Clarification on the parking. So we, because we changed some of the uses of the buildings, we're actually, the most conservative number is going to be 118, right? If everything was a restaurant, is that, am I...
So the highest number that it will be, will be 118.
Okay. Instead of 74 or something last time? So I know we're counting the public parking that's already there, plus the new parking lot, plus, I think, some street parking.
Correct.
So that's sufficient for that 118, right? That's...
Right, so when the Old Town Main Street project was designed, it was designed to have excess parking for this specific reason, so that, you know, there is a shared parking allowance.
Okay. So is that the way, I guess what I was also getting at, that public parking, is it shared? I know it's shared with other buildings, but does that parking count toward the parking for some of the other buildings that are already there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So even with this calculation, I believe there's about another 55, 60 parking spaces in the overall development.
Okay.
In excess.
That are able to be shared or count toward?
Yes, sir.
Any number of buildings? Okay, just wanted to clarify that there was still sufficient parking, even though we have, we now have a higher number, a bigger number?
Right, and that's on the assumption that each one of these has a restaurant component to it.
Right.
Obviously, if they go to a retail or office or medical use, there's a different calculation there.
Just apologies if I throw you off, because you may not have this calculation, but you know what the minimum number would be, like, if everything...
So the 74, that was before. That's if everything stayed, you know, office, office, retail.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have some questions for Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to bring him up before we get finished with our discussion internally.
Okay, sure. Then I'll wait.
Councilmember Hina Hosses Smith.
Thank you. Actually, so I think I just confused myself to follow up on Councilmember Carroll's question. So the minimum, if everything was retail and/or office, would be 74?
Right, versus the 118, so it...
The 118 if we were to maximize the use, as in restaurant versus retail?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, anything else internally? All right, um, is the applicant have anything he would like to say? Thank you, Ms. Boswell.
Good evening, Counsel. At this time, Mary has done such a phenomenal job presenting the project. I just wanted to answer any questions that you all might have. I am excited about the opportunity after the Old Town meeting previously that we can reach critical mass in Old Town by creating business product for the businesses that we're trying to draw to the Old Town area through the Discover Capel and such, by creating a project similar to this with any revisions that you might have to the zoning, so that we can put out there for the businesses that are looking to come to Capel to create that critical mass, we would have that business product available for them. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collins, for the Building One and Two...
Yes, sir.
So it's still as an office and residential. Is that something that's been already committed to a buyer?
No, some of the forethought that went into the idea after our last look at this was that with the traffic and the parking that we're looking at, if those were office buildings, the probability of use of the parking in the rear of the X lot would be during the business hours, 7:30 to 5:30 or 6:00. That would free up any of the parking and the traffic flow for the residential, I mean, for the retail and the restaurant, which would be more prevalent in the evenings, during the lunch hour, and on the weekends. So there is flexibility. Should someone decide that's where they want their retail shop, to bring these projects through individually to rezone them to another use.
And what about Building Six?
So Building Six, the medical use, in fact, I ran into the folks at lunch today that we have been talking since the very beginning of this concept, was to expand from the Livestream building next door to service a medical need. And we have been discussing, looking at drawings and what that would look like. So we would be using that building primarily during the day. It's a company that works with traumatic brain and PTSD and specifically, or a lot of their businesses with veterans. So that is the only of the six buildings that we've actually been working on a concept for and a business plan for.
So most likely, it's not going to be a retail restaurant because you almost have a commitment. Is that fair to say?
Anything, it's the only one that we have actually entered into dialogue. Again, we're trying to overlay that, because if it was retail and restaurant and they proceeded with moving forward, we would have to come back through this process again. Whereas if it's approved the way it's been presented, if they don't move forward, we have the opportunity for the retail and the restaurant.
Okay. So what I'm seeing is the site plan from December 13 and December, or today, there really isn't a change, except you did put medical office there with retail, but it sounds like you already have a commitment for that Building Six. So that's really not a change, because there's a commitment, pretty much, right?
Right, so the changes to the Buildings Four, Five, and Six were to add the retail and restaurant capabilities to those buildings with this zoning. They were originally presented as office throughout, and then we had several attempts to modify the, what we were willing to do. And so we brought it back with what we felt like was the highest and best use for success, knowing that at any time, any individual building could be brought back through the planning and zoning to change the use.
At this point, Building Six, it's now possible to just keep it as retail and restaurant only, with, I guess, the residential, right?
I believe that if that was done, it would not hinder moving forward with the entire project. And should we come to terms with an end user that would like to put a medical building there, then we would bring it back through individually. So any modifications to our proposed uses, we're accept, we would accept.
Okay.
There was one, just for clarification, when we, last time we brought the project through, density was brought up on more than one occasion. And so I just wanted to get a little clarity about the different types of density. Councilman Hill brought up mass. And so the density, if you look at the one dimension, would be how many buildings per acre. But if you looked at the density of, like, the Let It Shine, it's one building, but that doesn't take into account the square footage of the building. So in this case, like we had said before, we were advised to make these buildings as large as possible, so that if someone didn't want the building to be this size, we wouldn't have to come back through the process. We can build a smaller building in the same site. But as we looked at density, if we were to try to shrink the buildings in width, they would then be taller in appearance. And so that ratio aspect just wouldn't look right. So we came down at Building Six by lowering the pitch of the roof and brought it down by four feet, which makes the building look more compact. The buildings starting at the Frost Cupcakeery all the way up to Livestream, all of those buildings have a second-floor component. The Wealth Manager, the Livestream, and the Frost Cupcakeery are all two-story buildings with a second floor with a staircase going to the second floor, just for clarification.
And just to confirm, you were saying that you were willing to go ahead and change the Building Six to make modification to say that instead of medical office, you could just keep it as retail and restaurant?
Right, that would, that would come through the process we went through last time with making a motion and amending it. So we'll, I'll leave that with the attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for Mr. Collins? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. We have had multiple people signed up to speak tonight. Persons wishing to speak during this public hearing must sign and register with their address. You will be called to speak in order that you have registered. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes, and there shall be a cumulative limit of 60 minutes for all those speaking on this agenda item, and a light limit for all those speaking against the same item on the agenda. No group or organization should be allowed more than three speakers on any one agenda item. These limitations may be extended at the discretion of the majority vote of the council. Ms. Owens is going to call the order. We're going to listen to those in favor, pro first, and then we will listen to the cons later. Ms. Owens?
Thank you, Mayor. The first person that has signed up to speak is Ann Dragon. Ms. Dragon, if you'll just state your name and your address for the record.
Sure. Ann Dragon. I live at 727 Bent Tree Court. I also own the office building at 779 West Main in Old Town. I was not here when this went through the first time, but I just wanted to share with all of you that I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission 20 years ago, around the time the Old Town Plan was being developed. And I was also a participant in the Old Town Master Plan. So one of the things that we looked at, and if you could flip back to the picture with the visual rendering, can someone do that? Is that too hard? Sorry. I didn't bring any slides, but what we were looking for at the time was that we would look for a high-density, pedestrian-friendly area. And this was not going to be similar to other areas of Capel, and the building construction was even going to be different. And if you look this, at this visual representation, when we were talking about heights earlier, some of you were asking about it, you can see that these are two-story buildings. They're very dense, they're, you know, they're made so that we can walk very easily from building to building. And the idea is that it'll be mixed-use, not only with residential, but also with the components of your office, your medical, your restaurants, your retail. And what will drive those uses is really going to be the people who come in and want to purchase those buildings and use them in those. So the reason I share this with you is some of you have asked, John, I think maybe you asked, about, you know, having restaurants in all of them. That's great. They may all end up as restaurants, if that's what the demand is. But I think that what he's shown is a nice actual compliment to the buildings, showing that some of them are office, some of them are retail, some of them are restaurants. So the people will be there at different times. They'll have shared parking. We do have a shared parking agreement in the Old Town area that all of the business owners share. And then just lastly, I wanted to share about the height of the building, too. We want to remember that all the residential's that are down there, the homes are all two-stories. And I'm not sure exactly what their height is on some of those homes, but I'm guessing they're probably close to 30 feet. And I trust my planning and zoning staff over here that they've met all the parking requirements. And I did actually attend the planning and zoning meeting, and I talked to the commissioners who are currently serving, and they have all unanimously agreed that this would be a good product for the Old Town area. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or... Anybody? Okay, that's it. And I guess I'll say that I'm in favor of the development.
Thank you, Ms. Dragon. Next on our list is Mark Wolf. Mr. Wolf, if you'll just state your name and your address for the record.
Okay. Mark Wolf, 763 Lexington Avenue in Capel. It's probably been about 15 years since I've been here, but, you know, at the beginning of this development, I signed a petition no. And then after the change and the consideration, I became an advocate. And I want to go back in time a little bit, because I guess most of all you know that I was in public office, but I was the chairperson for the 1984 Bond Campaign that built the City Hall, Cosby Library, Fire Station, Andy Brown Park, Hertz, Van Bever, Moore Roads, the start of the Dent and Tap Road Project, what have you. And also, one of the highlights when I was on City Council was in 1989, when we had a task force that I chaired to redesign this city, because we had had a developer that designed this city with a build-out of 65,000 people, and we came back with a development of 40,000 people. The reason that I bring those two instances up was that Old Town Development was always a conversation in those. In fact, during one of the Bond campaigns, we probably had a town meeting of about 300 people, and we talked about Old Town. And I would tell you, this development here fits exactly, before we had the Old Town Committees and all the different things that we have today, it fits exactly where the conversations were back in those days. I've always compared it, our Old Town, to Snyder Plaza and University Park. You know, Highland Park, University... You know, Highland Park, University Park are very residential communities, just like Capel. We have the advantage of our west side industrial. But beyond the residential and the schools and the churches, that's Highland Park, except they have three shopping centers, Highland Park Village, part of Preston Center, and Snyder Plaza. And for about seven, eight years, my wife and I, every month, went down to SMU, to the Tate Series, to hear different speakers once a month, and we would always eat in Snyder Plaza, which was, you know, just a walk path from, from McFarlane Auditorium. And it's the mall and bar restaurants that were there. And, you know, I didn't, we didn't want to go to the Mecasino over Highland Park Village, or we didn't go to the, you wanted to go to those mall and bar type restaurants that made Snyder Plaza tick. Parking was horrible, everything was, but it was part of the whole flavor of the area that they made, that made it rich. And I sort of envisioned this to be that. We've got our wonderful art center, and to be able to have those type of entities there that makes us come alive more than what we have today. I think we're at that crucial point where Old Town can be what I think we all really want it to be. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next up to speak is Mr. Joe Shirley.
As I mentioned before, I'm against this, basically because it would require the tearing down of the church and the annex that's there now. And this is, this is one of the few things that's left in Old Town. And I question the usages of it. I don't have the square footage, but it looked like these ones that are designated for restaurants are really too small for a restaurant. And as you recall, we had two nice restaurants in Old Town that both failed, and then there was also a chicken place behind Twisted Route that failed. And periodically, you hear on the TV about, you know, a famous restaurant that's been in business for 50 years, and they're closing, and your, you know, restaurant's closing here and there and the other. And I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, a restaurant would actually do well in this location. And the main thing is, I'm concerned, I don't want to have our church and annex torn down because that's, that's a critical part of our history, and pretty soon, we're going to have absolutely nothing left. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Steve Chatick.
My name is Steve Chatick. Live in, or I'm the building owner at 509 West Bethel. And I just want to appreciate all your work on this project, and we're hoping you consider what Chris Collins is offering. I think it fits the plan. As someone who put a lot of sweat equity into that building, I understand the desire to keep it there. I think the historical designation has never really passed muster with that building with me. I mean, I love the building because, for its character also, but it's, you know, a 1948 building, maybe by Texas standards, it's historical. But there's been a lot of opportunity for people to move this in the past if they'd wanted, if they wanted to purchase the building, or they could have left it there and done what they wanted. It's, it's not happened. We've got church offers to purchase the building, and that's really about as far as it's gone. So building needs a lot of work. I don't think it's fair to the city of Capel to have to take on that for taxpayers either. And, you know, private citizens could still make this work if they wanted to. That, you know, Chris, I know, is open to those suggestions or whatever, but so far I've heard very little concrete that way, but I think there's maybe a new development in that sense. So anyway, I wanted to thank you again for your consideration. Property right owners, our property rights for owners are important here in Capel, and we've been here for a long time. I've, I've helped my father when he was still alive, this was about 1983, on this, on these projects. So anyway, thank you again. Appreciate your understanding.
Thank you. That completes the list of folks who signed up to speak in favor of the proposal. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor? Okay. If you don't mind, come on up, come on down. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address for the record.
You bet. It's Alan All, 522 Country Lane. We've lived in Capel for 32 years. We actually owned three houses in Capel. The last one is in Old Town. We bought it during COVID for our son and his wife to come visit us from San Francisco. And we've really fallen in love with the neighborhood. In fact, I just joined the Board of the Property Owners Association a couple of weeks ago. We had this, at our meeting, this topic came up. There was a lot of support for it. There was no opposition to it. I'm a real estate developer. We office in the uptown part of Dallas. One of the reasons we really like officeing there is it's a very dense location. There's lots of bars and restaurants close by. There are shops. There's, it's walkable. It's hard to find that in the suburbs. We, we've considered buying our own building. We've leased for, you know, 30 years, our office, and we're a small business, but we're so accustomed to the walkability and the amenities. I think what, what this development would really do is it would bring in a combination of uses. I think it's a big mistake to try and limit the uses to only restaurants. I think what, what this area has needed for a long time is momentum, and you just never know what's going to happen. One of the other speakers talked about the restaurant business. It's a, it's an up and down kind of business. So I think if we, if we leave the flexibility to the market, that's the best way to get some momentum and get this going. Again, we've lived here 32 years, and this, the current building on the site, I don't see it has any artistic or architectural significance. Again, in uptown, we've got lots of historic houses that have been restored and used for different things, but we also have a lot of new things that are, you know, really meet the market. So I would really encourage you to pass this and bring in more tax revenue and bring in more people to the city to go to the restaurants during the day and, and create something that's sort of, has some longevity. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Okay. So the next person that has signed up to speak is Karen Ward.
Hello, Karen Ward. I live at 2801 Denton Tap, and I own and work at the business at 615 West Bethel and South Capel Road, the Cottage Salon. So saving the buildings with history to myself and many means giving people places to walk through. They see, touch, use their imagination to think, who was here? What went on inside these walls? These buildings have charm and character. They were providing a gathering place for worship, services for people, gas station, community, newspaper, et cetera. Now businesses in these buildings with history will still are being successful, offering services and retail. These buildings are providing foot traffic, and people enjoy the older buildings. Capel does a great job of having good roads, great parks, informative signs. If these buildings must be moved, Capel, please save them and make a place for these buildings to allow small businesses to continue to rent and thrive, to make Old Town what it was originally built for. We all have memories in important places, things that we appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next signed up to speak is Sue McCarthy.
So I'm Sue McCarthy, 456 Woodway, and I would really kind of have a hard time visualizing this on that small lot right there on that corner. And why is residential included in that? Is that not going to take up more of the parking? I don't see any parking allowances for the residential customers. And I have visions of downtown Grapevine and how people are thrive there. All the businesses thrive there. And I don't see anything in this plan that's going to create that kind of, of ambiance, that kind of draw to downtown, to keep it Old Town, like wineries and breweries and restaurants, like Tollbert's. And I, I'm not getting that feel at all, that this is going to draw people to our downtown area. That's just my personal opinion. I wish that we could have a downtown Grapevine in downtown Capel with activities for kids like they do, and I'm just not seeing it with this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next signed up to speak is Bill Sheaton. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Bill Sharon, and I'm at 358 Hearthstone Lane, which is right across the street on Bethel, across from Swalty. And I would appreciate, I'm going to try to go through here quickly, but I'd appreciate if I, if there's any, just a small, like a minute extension, because I don't think I can do it, but I'm going to go very quickly. I've lived in Capel. We moved here about 1998. We've raised our family here. Recently, we moved to that address I just said, in Old Town Estates. I'm going to get my glasses on. We moved there for a reason. I knew the Old Town Master Plan. I participated in the significant citizens' input, and I wanted to be near Old Town. I spent about five or six days, or seven or multiple times a day in Old Town, and I wanted to be near that vision that I understood that master plan to be. My main concern tonight is with the, with the proposal has to do with actually the process. In my opinion, we're in a ready-fire-aim mode, and that's not good. I understand the urgency. I'm an urgent person. Then I understand the urgency of needing to do something, but is this the right project to meet the community's goals, and does it really fit the master plan? Or does it ignore the plan or circumvent it? If we're going to rezone, lift the historic designation, tear down character-defining, defining buildings, that's in the master plan, and overlook the master plan's vision, we should again include significant citizens' input. Last December, you guys denied this same proposal. Well, except for the main change, which is, quote, "The proposed uses for the buildings which restaurants have been added." That's it. Also, I think there's some parking spaces added, 44, and some sidewalks. So basically, this is the same proposal you previously denied. It's the same, guys. Because this is basically the same proposal, the council should have the same concerns as last December. Density. We can talk about density. There are ways to measure it, different ways to measure it. We measured it, it was reported at six to one density ratio. That's not realistic. That's building ratio. These are live-over-work structures, dual-use versus residential, so the actual density is easily 11 to one, easily. Parking. It was originally post-74. It's already been brought up. Now it's 118. Well, that's the max. Could it be the max? It's the max. It's 118. Go down there on a Saturday, people park two and three blocks away from the farmer's market. It's already, okay, we got enough parking? No, we don't. Build-out timeline. There is not a firm build-out timeline or commitment to it. Per the builder, per the developer in the December meeting, quote, "We will build as we can," end quote. That should be a major concern. Restaurants. I'm a restaurant consultant by profession. We do need an anchor restaurant, but it would be close to impossible to attract a successful restaurant to one of these units. Just telling you. The barriers to attracting a successful restaurant will be and are in place, lack of visibility, lack of traffic, square footage of the restaurant, to be able to be profitable. And the big one, parking, parking. Who's going to park three blocks away to come back over? Oh, we have an extra 50 that are, you know, other uses. Where are those 50? I, I guess they're by the, the new art center. Rest, excuse me. Also, by the way, I think it's already been brought up, by the way, there, there are very few, 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 few folks that I know that want to live above a restaurant. So that won't be restaurant, residential. So these are a few concerns. Again, does this meet our long-term goals for Old Town and being quaint? Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make a few quotes here, just read a few, because I think we've missed a few in previous presentations about the master plan. But a few questions you might have. Are we going too fast? Or maybe I have these. Is there a myopic focus on the tax revenue and on land use? I think so. Should we have more community input, like at the town hall meeting held a couple of weeks ago, where I said, "It's a cart before the horse"? Yes, absolutely, we do. And what are the stated benefits? There are benefits of doing this. We get it done. We do something. There's $60,000 of tax revenue. That's quantifiable. But there's a perceived benefit, this project, this project will best create this vibrant wow, an increased foot, foot traffic across Old Town. But based on what?
Mr. Sharon, if I can just ask, Counsel, would you like to extend the time?
Just two. I appreciate it. The hope that this project will revitalize Old Town is nothing but a gut feeling. Shouldn't we slow it down and get an impact study at least? The citizens of Capel have already clearly said what they want. Oh, they did. The master plan included 2,500 surveys and multiple meetings for input. As I said, I was there. I'd like to add a few quotes from the master plan real quickly here. "By taking an incremental approach, numerous opportunities for public input were provided before proceeding to the next phase," end quote. An entire page was dedicated to character-defining buildings. Again, I quote, "Character-defining buildings represents Old Town's second generation of buildings, and they still embody an overall historic character. Their preservation is strongly encouraged," end quote. One of the focus groups' ideas submitted was actually quoting, "Relocate old buildings from other areas of Capel into Old Town." Several other, continue quoting, "Several other, several older buildings contribute to the historic character of Old Town. They serve as a framework in which new development should be integrated." They talked about preservation, infill, and building on, on vacant land. That's the master plan. The citizens' biggest vision of the master plan is clear, and I quote, this is very important, "Architecturally significant buildings remain to reflect the history of the town. Remain as a physical record to the growth of the community and the individuals that contributed to the development of Capel," end quote. And lastly, what was the number one implementation goal of the master plan? Quote, "Encourage rehabilitation and redevelopment of existing buildings," end quote. That's the desire of the citizens. And in closing, I want to say another thing real quick. I'm an Aggie, okay? I get confused easily, and I guess I lost paying attention. I didn't even understand the 1413. You know, I'm sitting back there going, hey, Dan, kind of, again, there's an Aggie moment. But I find it curious that we separated those two things. But I find it curious that we separated those two things. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't separate the permit to remove trees until after approval. But we're going to do the raising. I don't know if it was, if it was, I don't think it was intended to be confusing, but again, for me, it was. My ask of you tonight is to deny the proposal, or at the least, vote to take the case under advisement to future date. Let's aim before we pull the trigger. Let's please take the time to gather significant input from the community, plan effectively, be thoughtful, and let's be deliberate so we're confident in these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Mendola. Ms. Mendola, if you'll please state your name and your address.
Thank you. Jennifer Mendola, 303 Walnut Grove Lane, Capel, Texas. And I apologize for missing my sign up for the citizens' appearance earlier. I had to run out for my piano lesson and didn't make it back in time. But, say, I spoke in December against this proposal. I'm still against this proposal. And as other speakers have pointed out, nothing that's being proposed tonight is different than what you rejected in December. Because the original proposal was rejected, and two amendments were rejected as well. And that first amendment was to limit the number of buildings that could have offices to only two, and that was still rejected. And the second amendment was to allow the rezoning, but with no offices. And that was also rejected. Tonight, we're back here with the exact same thing, except maybe we've changed the heights and added a sidewalk. I don't, I don't see any, any difference or any reason why we should be reconsidering this now. And I'd actually like to encourage the city council to maybe build in, I don't know if you need to do it through another ordinance or whatnot, but build in a cooldown period when you reject a planning or a zoning change, so that it's not every three months we're coming back with these minuscule little changes. Demand an actual, real change or a substantial period of time before coming back again. Otherwise, it just feels like we're letting the developers and people have multiple bites at this apple without actually making any substantive changes. As I said in December, and still believe now, and previous speakers have mentioned, Old Town should mean something. It shouldn't just mean buildings that look like they could have been old, or that they were built in the style of things that were old. If we're not willing to preserve this building and protect this building that the Capel Historical Society said was a Priority A building, what buildings are we willing to protect? And if we're not willing to protect any of them, why are we marketing it as Old Town? That's just bananas. And lastly, I would just like to point out that, or address that, both here tonight and at the last hearing, there were a lot of people saying that they were in favor of this proposal because they're in favor of individual property rights and private property rights. Some of the council members who voted for this zoning change in December stated that as their reason. And I'd just like to say that while I think we all agree in, you know, to some degree or another, that we believe in individual property rights, and that's a very nice sentiment, in absolute terms, it's just unlikely to be true. And we know this because we know that Capel is not Houston. We have zoning rules. And within those zoning rules, we have a lot of restrictions. Beyond just general rules that are applicable across, across the city, we, we have rules like all of our buildings have to have masonry exteriors. Why? Because you don't believe that people have an unfettered individual property right. And there's some value in having our buildings look similar. In some zones in Capel, the masonry even has to be of earth tones. That, I mean, is there, is there a value to doing it in other colors versus earth tones? Somebody at the city decided there was. And everyone who still thinks that we should have certain zoning rules doesn't believe in an unfettered individual property right. For my own property here in Capel, it's, it's in one of the single-family residential zones, I must have a garage. I can't choose to turn my garage into a different room. I can't choose to have a second family room. I have to have a garage. I can't add a third story to my home. Retail and restaurants, according to the code at least, can't have neon signs other than open. I don't know that we're actually enforcing that one, as I drove through Capel tonight, but it's in there. And most recently, the city council changed our rules that have restrictions on short-term rentals, which is another restriction on individual property rights. So all that, it's really just a long way of saying that all of these zoning changes and zoning rules and proposals are an exercise in line drawing. So when you say that you are in favor of this zoning change, I think it's incumbent on you to state why you think that this zoning change is appropriate, and why this use of private property is appropriate, and not just fall back on a general, "I believe in private property rights," unless, of course, you're willing to approve an ordinance amendment that would remove all zoning in Capel. And I hope that nobody here at Capel is in favor of that. So thank you again for your time. I value Old Town. I value the character and the history that's there, and I think it should be preserved. And I don't think that this proposal does that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Sarah Carrick.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Carrick. I live at 123 Lodge Road, and I own Jacaranda Gift Shop, which is at 456 West Bethel, and it's diagonally opposite the proposed development. You've all heard my arguments at the previous council meetings and planning and zoning meetings. You've received my emails, and I'm assuming you've read them. Thank you, Mr. Hill, for being the only person that actually acknowledged the receipt of my email. My stand has not changed. I'm still against the proposed rezoning, proposed development, as well as the proposed demolition and the church and its annex. If you look at the rendering that the planning and zoning staff keep referring back to for the vision of Old Town, you can clearly see the annex building in the top right-hand corner, just to the right of the Kirkland House. There was never any intention to tear it or any other old Capel buildings down. There was a clear intention to infill where necessary, to create a continual flow and mix of old and new. The Kirkland House at the end of the road still exists, but was unfortunately moved because of the developer, because of a developer-driven community that took over Old Town Capel. Joe's Barbershop is still there. The Old Senior Center is still there, and for sale, I might add. How about making that into the restaurant that it was originally proposed in the Old Town Master Plan? Why are we putting the future of Old Town in the hands of yet another developer? A developer who wants to do away with the history of Capel? A developer who has yet to sell any of the properties he's proposed and you approved along South Capel Road, despite numerous price reductions? He's since listed the land for resale, too. Is that what's destined for this main corner of Old Town? Is he going to tear down the buildings only to find he can't sell any of these proposed buildings? And then we're truly left with an eyesore? It all comes down to the fact that we have plenty of new in Old Town Capel, and not much old left. Let's keep what we have and make it into something special for the community. I hope you all took heed of the expert advice and community feedback at the community conversation meeting on April the 11th. Residents do not want another developer-driven space in Old Town Capel. I request that you redact the proposal for the rezoning from historic, the development and the demolition of the existing properties. At the very least, I ask you to delay your decision until you, the community, and the staff have had time to work on a plan for the entirety of Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our list of those who signed up to speak against the proposal. Is there anybody else who didn't sign up who would like to speak? Okay, Mayor, that concludes our list.
Thank you very much, and you, for everybody that signed up to speak tonight. You know, public input is always very important to this council. Council deliberations and discussions are up to you. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go back to the same thing that I said during the last time when we talked about this, which is that we spent money on promoting Capel, to discover Capel, to come shop and dine Capel. And that's the same thing that we're trying to do as of today. And I'm not sure, and looking at the proposal today, really hasn't changed from last time. You know, we talk, we constantly talk about bringing people into Old Town and trying to make it vibrant. Spending continuously to, I mean, on Discover Capel and moving forward, I'm sure we're going to continue to do that, to bring more, you know, people into the area. And I just don't see anything change to make it that with this proposal from last time. So I'm kind of concerned in that part, that we're trying to spend money to bring more people in, but what are we doing with this change of, you know, historic district to plan development and then not having something that people are going to come to? Or not really promote in the way that we should be promoting, like the way we're trying to promote with Discover Capel? So that's really my concern. Again, I don't see much of a change from last time, last proposal to this one. So that's, that's where I am right now.
Councilmember Gil.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when I look at this corner and the two buildings that exist there, my architect mind starts to think, what could the solutions be that can make that, that corner work to fit the context and the feel of Old Town? To be quite honest, the annex, I think it has no historical significance. The church, I feel, does. And if, if there was a way to integrate that into the development, or just to move it down the road, you know, we do own some property that we could carve out. But that shouldn't be the expense bore by the city, because the zoning very clearly says you have to have city council and P&amp;Z approval to do, to either demolish or move. So the developer came into this deal knowing that he had to make that happen. So, you know, what is it going to take to get the council to agree to that? You know, I think the solution there is, that he's, that he's proposed is probably the best that we can get. You know, I, I looked at, you know, how can you, how could you make a building that kind of creates a corner and gives a kind of that infill look? But that's asking a developer to come in and own that whole building and rent it out. And I just don't see that happening. That kind of investment in that area is just, I just don't think you can make the numbers And, you know, in terms of tax base, I don't think that's really going to make any difference to the city of Capel. That's not my driving decision. It's trying to make this Old Town plan work. I think the initial concepts were a good idea. I think there's been some missteps taken in the past, but we can't undo those. You know, I think there's some, some very good things that have been done down there. You know, you look at George, that's very successful. It's, it's a big draw. You look at Let It Shine, you have a lot of traffic in and out. They're doing so well that they wanted to build a larger building and actually moved to Capel and live above. So that live-work concept, I think, works. So I think I can, I can get behind the proposed plan that's there now, because it, you know, it went along with the four retail slash commercial that we talked about, with only two, two office spaces. But I think we, we have to do something to relocate the church. We can't just let it be demolished.
Councilmember Hino Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I make some comments, can I ask you a quick question? Yeah. Mary, yep, I said Mary. Sorry, Mary. Just because I'm, I'm visual, I'm just trying to think about this. But for the, can you go to the, in the very beginning, the list of buildings, 1, 2, 3, 4? Yeah, there. Okay, so just, I'm just trying to think out loud. Building 3, looking at the size of Building 3, can you help me understand, like, tell me another restaurant in Capel that would be similar to that space? Like Anemia's or, I don't know, just?
Okay, so Building 3, each floor is about 2281 is what it shows to be.
Right, right.
So I don't think you, okay, I'm not a, I'm not a restaurant person, but typically, it's not a small.
Well, I'm just trying to think, it's not big enough for like a heartache. So help me understand.
It's probably more of a smaller, few-table type of restaurant. Because by the time you have a kitchen and the rest of it, unless it's both floors.
And that's what I was going to ask you. For the, for the buildings like 3, 4, 5, and 6 that can be used as restaurants, both floors can be used as a restaurant, correct?
So, no, the way it's, the way it's done is 3 has the capability to be commercial, both floors.
Okay.
The remainder, to have the mixed use, have the residential above. So that's the intent, is residential above on all of 1, 2, 4, 5, 6.
Okay. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think through this, as in, you couldn't have restaurant in the bottom and then additional seating of the restaurant upstairs?
Right, that's not what they're, they're looking to do. They're looking to have the residential component on all of them. Only 3 has the capability to be totally commercial in some aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussions, I'm open to Councilmember Nipols.
Sneak one in there. Ms. Collins, can you come, I have a question for you. Kind of, Brown has got me thinking, or I'm sorry, council member, Hino Smith's got me So obviously, it is set up specifically that there is retail restaurant down at the bottom on, you know, 3, 4, 5, or the medical, and then the residential on top.
Correct.
You know, what I heard- You know, what I heard in the community conversation we had about Old Town was getting some more vibrancy, getting some more things down there. So, as Mary was just talking about, specifically, you know, we're looking for that, you were looking for that residential component on the top. Would you be opposed to having the ability to have the restaurant be on top on Buildings 4 and 5? And then what would that do to the parking? Because there's more square footage, the parking would go up, right?
So, yes, it's been discussed what could be used on the second floor. And this is where we kind of got a little derailed about 12:45 in the morning, last meeting. And that is, once again, if a restaurant owner was interested in the building, and they said, "We don't want to use the residential component above our restaurant, we can bring that back through again." It's going to require some changes in how it's done. For example, we don't need the two-car garage. The two-car garage is specifically for the residential component. And so, any of the flex that we're trying to, it's very difficult for me to work with as a developer, the planning and development group, to come up with something for six buildings to be exactly what everybody wants. So we need the flexibility and the understanding that if a restaurant wanted to come in and have a balcony second floor and have the second open, all of that is possible. It just would require coming back through for a zoning change individually on each building. We have had, in addition to our process that I did not mention last time I was up, because I was saving it for the purpose of the demolition, we've entered into an agreement in writing to take the front portion of the church, the first 40 feet, and have it moved onto private property in Old Town at my expense with no taxpayer dollars. So, like my intention has been said since day one, my intention is to preserve the buildings by relocating them. If we don't relocate them, then we're going to repurpose materials. But it's come to fruition to, we've had a site plan developed by Greg Franka. It's been presented to city staff for review. And we've got a green light to keep going forward with the feasibility of moving the building in Old Town on private property with private funds.
All right. Thank you for your answer about the upstairs restaurant.
Mayor Proxim.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to ask you a follow-up question. I just wanted to understand what you just said. You got into an agreement with the vendor to remove, move the church to what location?
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we really need to be careful that we stay on task for item number 13, please.
Okay, I'll defer to the next item on that question. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very fair question for the next segment. Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary, I have a few questions for you. And maybe even Mike could chime in too. But we had that town hall meeting about what Old Town should be. And I believe we also had, you said there was mention about getting some survey.
That's in the works.
Okay, so we haven't actually had a result?
No.
As to the, has it been sent out?
No, I believe that's being formulated currently.
Just to, the information provided, there were several points. And we indicated that the target is, have the survey results to you by the 5th Tuesday in May.
Okay. So, we haven't had additional input from those that are actually in the area other than those that actually came to that meeting, right? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. We have not had any additional meetings since the meeting that Thursday night. So, the additional information won't be available until May the 30th. Okay?
Okay.
5th Tuesday.
And when is that projected to go out and get the information? Any idea?
I haven't even seen the first draft yet. I'm supposed to meet on that tomorrow. So, within the next several weeks.
Okay.
Sorry, he knows more about that than me. I said, "You know more about that than I do."
No, no, thank you for that information because I know we talked about getting more additional information from those that actually live in that area.
Yeah, if you recall, the questions were going to be associated with, what does activation mean? And how willing are you, it didn't have anything to necessarily do with land use. It had to do with generating more activity in Old Town.
Sure.
Because there were concerns, what happens after 9 o'clock at night, what happens on the weekends? So that's the main emphasis of the survey.
But also as to what we want the future of Old Town to be?
That was not going to be the specific questions. That's ultimately for this group to figure out how they want to move on.
I'm just trying to see if we have more input about what the residents wanted the Old Town to be. So that's just, okay.
If that's something that you would like us to include in the survey, we can. But that was not the direction we understood the survey was going to be about. It was going to be sent to primarily the residences in around the square and the Old Town area, again, to address the activation issue.
Okay, then I kind of misunderstood because I thought we were actually going to put a survey as to what the entire Old Town, so, yeah.
That's not on the agenda. The zoning case is on the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you for that information.
Councilmember Hill.
I'd like to request, will we go into executive session with the town attorney?
All right. We will recess from regular session of the Capel City Council at 10:22 and convene into executive session. You guys give me a moment because it takes me to changing up Zoom settings to do this. All right, we have returned from the executive session, the called executive session of the Capel City Council. And we are reconvening into the regular session of the Capel City Council at 10:52 PM. We had just concluded discussions with a legal attorney on items of interest. The topic before us is council discussion. Councilmembers, do you have any? We're still open to discussion at this point. Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. As I look at this, and it's a, if I look at this as the zoning case that it is, after a couple of different sessions, this development, a proposed development, fits what is already down there. I think it addresses well, like on Bethel Road, I think the 1 and 2 are office, where there wouldn't be as much pedestrian traffic. So I think that's an appropriate use of those buildings. The ones on Main Street, where you're going to have more traffic or more retail or restaurant, or I think Medical Office is one of them. So I think, looking at this, there's not requests for variances from what has been approved down there or what is allowed down there. I think this is an appropriate case from a zoning standpoint for this property. And if it's about land use, which I think is what's in question on this item, I think this is an appropriate land use for this development. We are looking to get more activity down there. You know, and I know there, sometimes it's been identified that there have been some misses down there. But you can look at Denton Tappan Sandy Lake, and you find businesses that close from time to time. And so that's not unusual that, you know, that sometimes you're going to have a miss when you're developing something. But in general, I think we, the city over time, or the developers over time, have created an environment that has brought more activity down there. And I think this would be a continuation of that type of development. So I think it's an appropriate land use. And I would certainly encourage or urge that we approve this as it's proposed for item 13.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proxim.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the applicant. Is that an appropriate time to ask?
Yes, go right ahead.
My question is, as I stated in my first comments, Building 4, 5, and 6 just added restaurant. That is the only significant change that I saw from the December submission. So my question to you is, removing, we had the discussion at Old Town. I know you were present there. I was there also. My table was more discussing about more restaurants, more booths, I should say, in Old Town and to make it more vibrant. Are you willing to entertain removing the office space from the Building 6? Just the restaurant and retail place? Or changing with the number 1 or with the number, Building 6?
Like I mentioned earlier, if Building 6 was to only be retail or restaurant, that would be fine. If we end up with someone wanting a different use than it's zoned for, we can bring those back. And that way, the part of the master plan that talks about the market dictating, this gives us the flexibility to allow the market to dictate. Our hope and prayer is that the money that we're spending, like Councilman June mentioned, through the Discover Capel, if these products are available to the people that we're trying to attract, not the consumer, but the businesses, if they don't have a place to bring their business to Old Town and they have to start from scratch, there's a two-year lead time in that. So, being flexible to change with the market by bringing each building back individually is kind of the view we're taking. So yes, if they need to be, if you need to change the use to pass this, we'll accept that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hill.
So, I wanted to ask you, so, taking that approach, why did you only want to have office for 1 and 2? Why didn't you add retail to that proposal?
Well, the initial discussions that we've had is that on Bethel, there's not as much pedestrian traffic. You know, my business is located on South Capel Road, just a block south. I know the pedestrian traffic that's traveling north-south. And I know the pedestrian traffic, if you watch it, that moves from Capel Road or from Main Street east, there's traffic that direction because of the businesses there. You don't see a lot of foot traffic in front of those buildings. The other thing that have in those is offices with the parking that keeps coming up is that if they're offices during the day, they'll have the parking and use in the back parking lot for the employees. And then when the business closes, the employees will be gone, which then frees up some of that traffic pattern.
Okay, thank you.
But once again, if somebody came and said, "Hey, that would make a great restaurant for our venue," we would just go through this process to rezone it to a restaurant. Or if somebody wanted the second floor, we can just come back through this process on an individual building for a planned development that's already been approved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hino-Hosoe, Laura Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the council that sat up here and was part of the discussions with regards to what the vision was for Old Town, we wanted Old Town to be, obviously, we wanted to set it up for success. We wanted it to have a combination of residential, office, retail, restaurants, where it was, it would, we knew that it would, we weren't looking for it to be a destination location like a South Lake or an Addison, for example, or even a Grapevine. But we wanted it to be a destination location for the citizens of Capel to eat and shop and enjoy the amenities that Capel offers. We know that over time visions change, council members change. And the reality, though, is that what doesn't change is, and I would hope I speak to all for all my fellow council members, we still want that area to be a success. And having, and what we've added now down there as somewhat of an anchor, like, I mean, back then, the anchor was Hard Eight. anchor was Hard Eight, and we know that has drawn people from all over the region, and people who come from even out of town. And then now we've added the Art Center. And we want people to have places to eat and shop and enjoy for those who live in Capella, who live in that area, for it to be a walkable community. So I think that's still the vision, that I know that's my vision. I want that area to be successful. I know that it's late, and so first of all, thank you all so much for being here and for all the comments, pros and cons. And Mr. Collins, thank you for listening to the feedback that people gave and for the flexibility in looking at office, residential, and restaurant. However, my big issue last time was density, and continues to still be a concern for me. For me, I, you know, I asked about restaurant because I'm visual, right? Trying to understand, when you look at Lot Three, would an Anamias fit there, or would a Jimmy John's fit there? Like, what actually would fit there to make it successful? I still would love to see this area developed. I love the look and feel. I love... There's a lot of things I love about it. But I think for me, I would be in favor of five mixed-use buildings in that area instead of six. And that is where I stand, and that, just for me, it just seems too dense, and I become concerned with what can actually these... Each of these individual lots be used for and be truly successful. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, we've knocked this thing around a lot, but I am in favor of what the developer has proposed here. I live down there. I don't have the same feeling that... That some of the council people have, and I think that density is a problem for some. It's not a problem for me, because I've got another house 12-foot from mine, so I'm used to density down there. So there's... I mean, it was designed for density, or actually, it was designed to put a number of businesses down there. So that's just a matter of taste, as is, in fact, the entire development that Mr. Collins wants to bring to the... To that corner. But I think that, as businessmen, I think that they've probably spent about as much money as they'd like to and are sitting on... And sitting on getting that money working for them, and that's both buyer and seller. So consequently, I think we've... It's time. It's time for us to make decision.
Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I mentioned it earlier, but I, you know, I really enjoyed the community conversation we had on March 30th about Old Town. And, you know, the term "critical mass" came up multiple times. We need more down there to attract. We need to get more people down there. I will say, I do appreciate the developer going back and listening to what we said, because I know, last time, the discussion got a little... Got a little jumbled, got a little... It mixed up about what kind of uses we wanted. There were amendments and things like that. And I think that what the developer has done here is come back and just put everything in a package, tried to listen to everything that we said, and tried to come back with something that accomplishes all those things. Plus, with your building six, obviously, hopefully getting a lead on, you know, that first pot of land. So, you know, I respect Mr. Collins for continuing to invest in Capella, especially the Old Town area. He's stepped up to the plate a couple times. Looking forward to seeing what products come out of this. To Mr. Chaddick, I appreciate, you know, you and your family's legacy to this area, and, you know, but I definitely understand, you know, wanting to move on and, you know, work with Mr. Collins on this. So for me, this checks the boxes, what we're looking for with the critical mass aspect that I'm looking at, and I've heard from the community members of the Old Town area. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion. So I'd like to move to... Or I'd like to move to close the public hearing and approve Agenda Item 13 as presented.
With conditions, please.
With conditions. Apologies. With conditions.
Second by Councilmember Carroll. Any discussion? All in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. You got Mark. Mark has discussion. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hill.
Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, so, Mary, do you have that PD vicinity map on the slide? It was in our package. It's a composite PD site plan, shows kind of all of Old Town.
The parking plan? This one?
Yes, yeah. So when I started to study that really closely and look at those existing, what are called cottages, I believe, Cliff, didn't you have one, your business there, one of those cottages? Yes, so those are about the same width. And, you know, I was, you know, trying to, you know, visualize, you know, because you were questioning what, you know, how big is this? So they're about that same width, but they're just two stories. And they're similar, when you look at them in context, to the buildings that are up the street towards Twisted Route. So, you know, I think I'm okay with the scale and the density. I mean, it fits with what's there, and I think that I can support it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Long, Carol, Nevels, Hill, opposed. Hinaho So, Smith, John, Matthew, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Item number 14. Ms. Boswell, will you please read this into the record?
Oops, sorry. Item 14 is consideration of a demolition permit for 509 West Bethel Road for the demolition of existing structures on-site. Sorry. Okay. So this is for the consideration of a demolition permit for 509 West Bethel. Per Section 12-28A-10 of the zoning ordinance relates to demolition in the H District. The Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council approval is required. So this is why this is before you this evening. So there are two structures on-site, identified in the blue on the left-hand side. According to the Capella Historic Resource Survey provided by the Capella Historic Society, the T-shaped building was built in 1948 in the Capella Baptist Church, as the Capella Baptist Church, replacing a building erected in 1896. The other structure is an education building, in addition to the church that was built in 1953, and houses the kitchen, nursery, and Sunday school rooms. The buildings are not on the state or federal historic registries. The owner has indicated that the buildings are underutilized and in need of work. The owner would like to have the ability to demolish them and to make way for a new development. So the current proposal for that site was to create seven lots that would contain six mixed-use buildings and one parking lot, which City Council just approved. In order to move forward with the plat and the approved plan development, the buildings cannot remain on the site. The developer, Chris Collins, has indicated that they would be willing to repurpose elements from the buildings into the new buildings. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request, and just to let you know that this is a regular hearing and not a public hearing. That is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Boswell? Councilmember Nevels.
Is it appropriate to talk to the applicant at this time about the demolition permit?
Yes, sir. The applicant is here, available to answer questions.
Excellent. Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir.
All right, that was a... Probably not the right time and place to talk about something you were talking about earlier, but I think we're here now. So I'd love to ask you about that, just in terms of... You said something about the moving the church, the front section of the church, to a area of town in Old... Or in Old Town. Could you please tell me about that?
So the intent has always been to relocate or repurpose. And in doing so, a couple of you guys had wanted to possibly adjourn back in December and let us try to work something out. I have been working with people in the area that have a desire to see the buildings preserved, and we came up with the idea that, what if we don't take the whole building? What if we just took the front facade? If you... Can you pull up the picture? So the original sanctuary, if you were in the chamber when we were located there, when you go up the front steps, there's two, kind of like a vestibule, with two offices on either side, then it opens up into what was the sanctuary of the church. And so what we've looked at was this bright-eyed... No, I was looking for the demolition permit survey, because it shows, yeah. And so what the idea was, was where it tees, from that location to the front steps, is about 40 feet. And so when we got into, where can we put a 36-by-40-foot building, I brought up to a couple of the property owners, you know it'll fit right there. And I'd had a conversation during another meeting with Matt Steer on another topic about, hey, could we pull this up? And what if we did this? And when they'd like, well, you'd have to get a permit, it'd be a process. And when I brought it up to the owner's attention, they ran over and measured the building, and measured the space, and said, wow, it'll fit. And from there, engaged Greg Franka, who happened to have surveys of my property, or this property, sizes of the buildings, put together a site plan, presented it with Matt, and it seems like we're still moving forward. So we are going to exhaust every resource we can. Just because the demolition permit is approved today, our timeline for being able to actually do anything requires asbestos studies, asbestos remediation, before anything can go on. So the whole process is going to take a while. So what I'm expecting is to continue to work with these private property owners to come up... We've done a target budget. It's in the target budget that I'm willing to fund the move and relocation of. And so now we're going to have to get the building inspection department in to talk about what that looks like, if any variances would be needed, and et cetera. But with this approval of the plan tonight, we're going to be moving forward with this relocation idea, and are open to any other ideas of relocating the buildings. The reason the demolition permit is before you now is a timeline issue. As you know, this is going on 14 months, 15 months since we started this project. And to approve the demolition permit, even if our first look at moving the buildings down the street to the senior center was approved, and we were going to do that, there's still a portion of the buildings that won't be moved, because they're on concrete slabs, there's still cleanup going to be required. And so a demolition permit would be required to finish cleaning off the lot. So instead of waiting, six months from now, coming back through with a demolition permit, we're running it concurrently. I expect that we're going to have the same process is required if we move the building, to come back to you guys with a site plan and everything to say, now we need approval to move the building. And then once everything is moved, or can be repurposed, then the demolition would start. So that's kind of the thought process. We still have time, if people are interested in coming up with other solutions for any of the rest of the buildings.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hill.
Want to ask the applicant one question. So when you put in this request, why didn't you call it a partial demolition?
Because there's not an application for a partial demolition permit.
What's that?
There's not an application for partial. So...
Okay.
I thought he was going to take over my chair there.
My question would be, if you issued the permit, he's got a demolition permit, there's two buildings. So you could demo, you could tonight vote to demo the annex, vote to deny the church, and just tell him to bring back an application to relocate or demolish the primary building. And you can call it partial at that point. He'll have to amend it to bring back, but you could issue the demo permit for the annex tonight, because there are two buildings.
Yeah.
And then just ask him to bring back... I don't know what his timeline is, to make a decision about moving. I mean, he could still do the asbestos review and do all the things as if he were going to demolish it, because he's going to have to demolish it or remove it, and he's got to do the asbestos abatement on-site. He can't move it without it. So that's an option.
Sir, counsel, any other comments or suggestions?
So, Mr. Collins, is that something that you would consider?
I'm going to ask for a step of faith on your part. Due to the timelines that we've experienced so far, to keep pushing out, I've said and done exactly what I've said and done. I've done everything I've said I would do. I said that we would do everything we could to move the buildings. I'm still, after six months to a year of this, the only person... I'm still, after six months to a year of this, the only person who's put money up. So what I would prefer is to move forward with the demolition permit on the same reason it's before you today, is so we don't continue to drag this out. It'll be three to six months before we get there. That's plenty of time for anyone, my door's open, to come up with any other solutions to save even part of the annex. The front portion of the annex can be moved. It was where we started, then we realized the church would fit. I've been open to work with anybody that wants to try to do this. So far, we found one. And we've asked for no tax dollars to do it. So I would prefer to move forward with the entire demolition if that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I think certainly there's a lot of trust going on in this whole situation that we have. And based on that, I mean, you've, you've been a partner with the city in other developments, and I suspect there will be future developments that you'll want. And so we, we all have a common goal of trusting each other. And based on that and based on the timeline, I guess, I think it is appropriate, the, the development cannot go forward without something, the, the buildings being demolished or something else, you, you choose to, to move them or something. And I would trust that you would actually seek out, I mean, if, if, these, these buildings are important, clearly, to many, many people in the community. And that should, needs to be considered and everything, and I would trust that that would be the case. But based on that, I would move to approve Item 14 as proposed.
Thank you. We have a second from Councilmember Hill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Long, Carol, Neves, Hill, in favor, opposed. Hinoza, Smith, John, Matthew, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you, guys. This has been a long night, and I appreciate everyone staying with it. Item number 15 is our city manager's report. Mike?
Mayor and council, this, something new that we're adding to the report is a Work Session Direction summary from last March 28th meeting. We received direction to move forward on two items. First, we've received direction to move forward to implement a new, more sustainable and water-friendly landscape palette for city medians. And second, staff received direction to move forward with Streambank Stabilization Revolving Loan Program. It is like funded via the DUD. Just as an FYI on that, of the six property owners and that were in question, five have said that they were interested in the program. So we do have interest. There was no direction given this evening on any of the Work Session items. Winter averaging, UB, utility billing anticipates sending out the first bills reflecting winter averaging early next week. Currently, the UB team, Enterprise Systems, and Munis are working together to run billing tests using the winter averaging information to make sure that we're getting verified calculations. The Moore Road Boardwalk, if you haven't been out there, they're still on schedule. The contract has begun drilling the piers so that we'll have that project continuing to move forward. And it does smell every once in a while. If you walk around the park, just some of the fish that didn't get taken out. I know. So anyway, South Belt Line, as mentioned earlier this evening, should be finishing the last part, port of the paving for Phase Two probably by the end of the month. And they're looking at being able to open it up to traffic probably no later than the middle of May. Panel replacement on East Sandy Lake is still ongoing. And the last thing I'd add, Councilmember Hill had asked this question. Knowing what we did at Moore Road and the Duck Pond Park, as far as fish are concerned, they're going to be sectioning off the pond so that they can keep the fish in the pond while they're doing work. So it'll be done a little bit differently. Plus, it's a much smaller pond than what was over at Moore Road. So, anyway, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think my computer's getting as tired as we are, is acting a little slow. Sorry about that. Item number 16 is mayor and council reports. The annual Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation is underway this April, and I invite all Capel residents and visitors to participate alongside with the city of Capel in the national competition to conserve water resources. As Mike already mentioned, we are already beginning a part of that with the winter averaging. So to learn more about water conservation and living a more environmentally friendly lifestyle, visit capeltx.gov/sustainability. To learn more about your water usage, visit, and how the advanced water use, water meters can help you track your water consumption, visit capeltx.gov/h2o. Come celebrate Capel's commitment to the environment with Earth Fest hosted on, at the Biodiversity Center on Saturday, April 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And document shredding will also be offered at the Capel Service Center on the same day, April 22nd, from 8:00 a.m. to noon on that Saturday. Item number 17, are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted? Anybody have any public service announcements? Seeing none. There was no necessary action from the executive session, so therefore, there be no further business for this council. We are adjourned at 11:27 p.m.